All right. Good evening and welcome to the December 6th regularly scheduled school committee meeting. It is now 6:00 PM and I'll call the meeting to order. As a reminder, this meeting is being both audio and videotaped. And if anyone else is doing so, there's nobody here with us. If you're in watching the meeting, if you are audio or videotaping, can you just raise your hand and let us know? And it doesn't look like anyone is, so then we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll do a roll call and we are a large spread out group today. So why don't we start with Pam? And then we can kind of come all the way around the table.
Sure. Pamela Blair, Superintendent for Business.
Grammy Thompson.
Antonella Rochilla.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Sarah Trulio.
Bill Fancica.
Elizabeth Marsken-Boucher.
Nicholas Cassidy.
Heather Brown, Director of Curriculum.
And we have Kathy Seletti. Go ahead, you can do it.
Kathy Seletti, Recording Secretary.
Thank you, Kathy. Good to see your face on camera today. So we have some minutes that we need approval for.
We'll approve the April 15th regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Beth. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries five to zero. Committee and subcommittee communications. Greg, you want to start us tonight?
Yeah, you jumped the spot, didn't you?
Oh, what did I jump? Oh, sorry. Opportunity, I made a check mark. Opportunity for listeners to address the committee. There's nobody here. If there's anybody who is watching, if you raise your hand, we can let you in. No hands, so we will move forward to now, subcommittee and committee communications.
And I will pass next of all.
Antonella?
So I had attended an ELEE meeting last week. And we're doing the ELEE Gala on February 12th. And you can purchase tickets at elee gala 2022 dot EZ event dot com. Educators are able to purchase tickets for 100. And there's a coupon code that you can get for that.
That's exciting.
When you go to the website, educator 75. So if you put in educator 75 as an educator in our school system, then your ticket's only 100.
For everybody else, how much?
175.
Great. And it's where?
It is at the starting gate at Great Horse.
Nice.
Yep, from 6:00 to 11:00.
Very nice. It's nice to see that they're running that again.
Mm-hmm. Should be a good time.
Is there going to be dancing?
Yes, dancing, music, food, raffle, auction.
Dancing from 10:50 to 11:00.
We'll be looking for you then, Gordon.
Gordon, anything today for us?
Yeah, actually, one pretty exciting announcement from just this afternoon. So our subcommittee from the ELHS Full Building Committee, the subcommittee was created to move through the owner project manager selection process. The final piece to that process is to meet with the Mass School Building Authority OPM review panel. We did that this afternoon. And I'm happy to say that we now have an owner project manager, Scanzka Building USA Incorporated. And they have a ton of experience with MSBA projects. Currently, they have at least two projects that are going on in Springfield. And I believe they're finishing up one at Deconic High School. And there's one that I'm missing that they're involved in. So they're beginning to finish jobs. And so they're, one of the things you look at is what's their capacity to take on another project. And the timing is right, plus the fit seemed for East Long Meadow seemed like a good connection. And they also have on their team, they were the only person on their team that brought in their presentation, someone who does the communication and the information out to the larger community. And so we're excited to work with them. We're excited to go through the panel review today successfully. And so we move forward now in the, what's considered the feasibility study phase, if you will. Now we're into designer selection. And once we get a architecture, engineering firm on board in that designer selection process, which could be a timeframe between now and, say, April.
Okay.
Then they start to really go after the full feasibility study. And they look at our statement of interest. They'll be coming into the high school, looking and saying, okay, well, the electrical system is stated as a huge challenge, which it is. So let's look at that. What are the challenges? Because they're going to be tasked with putting together a study to look at not only new building, but to also look at what does a comprehensive renovation look like? And then some combination of comprehensive renovation in addition. And that all goes into the study that could take another, from April, another six to eight months to complete that. So it's a long process. But we're moving in it. And I'm happy to say we have an owner project manager.
That's terrific. That's exciting news. Moving pretty expeditiously, given, you know, everything that's gone on over the past two years, moving along on a pretty good clip, which is exciting to hear.
Hopefully, we'll be an article in the reminder Thursday. So we'll get, you know, same information, but in another venue.
That's important for the community to be aware, so that they can kind of track where we are in our journey and make sure that we're moving in the right direction. Awesome.
Is there an article already underway? My question being, does it lay out kind of a timeline of what's to happen going forward?
Yes. Scanzka gave me a timeline that I was able to share with them.
Okay, that's great.
So hopefully, yeah.
Does that include town, town decision votes and such, or?
I don't know that we, I'm trying to remember the exact, that part I talked about, but I didn't give an exact timeframe for.
Okay, great.
You know, that eventually, when you get through the study, you do have to come back to the town now and say, okay, here are the amounts. And you also have to go to the NSBA, similar to the review panel. And you more or less have a lively discussion about what the feasibility study is saying, and which of the three is going to be the best solution.
Who has that discussion?
So members of the building committee, who are only going to get three seats at that discussion. And they have 13?
13 seats.
Yeah.
Um.
Are you going?
So we haven't decided who's going yet. No, I think it would make sense, the way the building committee, and we're jumping ahead. We're jumping ahead now, 10 months possibly. But the building committee selected individuals that have that background, you know, bidding and so forth. And so, you know, obviously, that might be a good idea to have someone with that kind of experience who reads these studies all the time.
Will you be at the table?
I don't have to be at the table, but.
I wouldn't mind you being there.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I just think we need someone who's aware of the intricacies of the past and the future.
Yep. And we have two school committee members on the building committee. We have Antonella and Beth.
That's great. That's exciting news.
Yeah, it is exciting. It's interesting. So I'm used to going to Boston for the 20-minute meeting, where it's nice to actually Zoom and do the 20 minutes.
I don't have anything tonight. Bill?
Yep. LPVC Students of the Month for November. Nicholas Gower and Information Support Services and Networking. Kristen O'Brien and Landscaping Technology and Horticultural too. And Mary DiNucci for Technical Career Exploratory. Congratulations to those three students.
That's exciting.
I went to the Potter Football Game, which I thought was a riot. It was a good time. Nobody goes. I hope in the future it can get a little more because it makes money for the key clubs. So next year, maybe we'll have to yell about it a little bit louder before it happens. It was like on a Tuesday night before Thanksgiving. Maybe find a Friday that's not a football Friday. But it was, it was a lot of fun. My daughter made 20 bucks off her brother because he says, if you tackle somebody, I'll give you 20 bucks. And she did. Yeah, I think you ever try that.
That sounds interesting.
It hasn't been there.
Yep.
Yep.
Next.
Okay. Well, I haven't been here in two weeks. So there are a couple of things that I can talk about. So last week at ELHS, we did start winter sports and tryouts. And I know my friends and myself are very excited for the season because last year was kind of weird. But like, for like, at least for like, track, we didn't really have a track. We had to go outside and it was freezing cold. But I mean, it's still kind of weird this year, but at least we're having indoor tracks. And like, everyone's trying their hardest for that. And I'm not familiar with the other sports team schedules, but I do know that track this upcoming weekend does have their first meet. We are going to, someone really far away to go to it, actually, because we can't go any closer. But then last week, also, the freshmen took the PPSATs, which is sort of new, which is the pre, pre SATs, which I never took as a freshman. But I mean, I guess it's helping them for the future. And then two weeks ago, before break, the Medside Club brought the occupational therapy staff and their students to talk to the club and brought hands-on activities for everyone. And in the next two weeks, they're going to be having some more staff come in. And I know, because I'm one of the co-presidents of the clubs, which is a shameless plug if any students or parents in the audience are watching, if they want their kid to join the club, they can contact me. But it's always so much fun. And also, last week, the, not last week, two weeks ago, the seniors had their hot cocoa on the GoGo fundraiser. And I can say, as a treasure, we did make a good amount of money. And it was a great event for the seniors. So that's kind of it.
I did forget, I was at the high school for a wonderful event for a forum relative to students really trying to unpack the civics project. And it was, the dates are all mixing up now because we haven't been together in a little while. It was a really, really nice opportunity to hear from many of your classmates and to see where folks are interested relative to the civics project and where the educators are really trying to help unpack what's kind of a complex project that's coming out of the department event and trying to really make sure that they're laying some really nice action steps ahead of students so that they can meet with success on that. So that was a real treat to be able to spend some time with the students and answer some hard-hitting questions. That is for sure. Some very strong questions. And I did mention your name, Nick, to a few of them as a possible follow-up to any questions that they have for the school committee, that as their representative within the student body, that you would be a great point of contact to be able to share and showcase some of those questions during our time together.
Okay, sounds good.
Excellent. And you said you have some work to get to this evening, so we will bid you adieu. And we thank you. We thank you for your time tonight and for that wonderful update. Thank you. All right. So moving forward, we are going to move into our health data, which again, is something that we've been unable to kind of talk about as comprehensively as we have before, because we didn't have a full health panel in place. So we should have Tammy Spencer, Dawn, and Kelly LeBlanc. They can come in. That would be great. Hi, Tammy. Hi, Kelly.
Hello.
First, just once.
Hello.
Tammy, so I don't think.
I'm in my, I'm in my mom's office, AKA the car outside of martial arts right now. Hopefully, you can hear and see me.
We can. We appreciate your time tonight. And welcome to your first official school committee meeting. And welcome to the position that you are charged with relative to health.
I am so happy to be here.
So has everybody met Tammy before or no?
No.
So we are.
Tammy Spencer, who's on screen right now. Hi, Tammy.
Hi, Gordon. Yeah, this is, I think, the beginning of week four. So.
She started.
It's been a fun month.
November 15th, right, Tammy?
Yes, yes. Brand new. I came from Southwick prior to this. I was the health director there. And I feel like I'm, you know, jumping in feet first. I don't know if you guys want to go into the statistics, but it's been an interesting month. I'll tell you that for COVID.
Sure, if you want to.
No, no, that's great.
If you want to start us off, that would be great with some of the statistics.
So as the month has been going forward, the numbers have been rising steadily for the last four weeks. As of right now, we have about 76, yeah, 76 residents who have tested positive and were in isolation. Only 14 of those are actually 18 or under. 42 of those people were vaccinated. And right now, our positivity rates for the town is at 4.98%, which is lower than Hampton County, which is at 5.72%. So that's kind of where we are with the statistics for COVID numbers. But I think our vaccination numbers are looking great. They're slowly rising now that the youngest age group, five through 11, are open to get vaccinated. We're looking at about, over a quarter of them have already been, received one dosage, which I think is fantastic. And then for our other groups in town that are fully vaccinated, the 12 through 15 is at 63%. And the 16 through 19 is at 73% fully vaccinated. So that's looking pretty good. I don't know if there's anything else you guys want to talk about?
I think Kelly was going to give this specific vaccination, just, you know, related to what you just explained, because that's the timeline. Kelly may have the breakdown for ELPS.
Yes, you do. So if we look at, I actually did all the schools, but I'll start with Birchwood Park. So we are up to 45% of our students are fully vaccinated and 69% of our staff. So that combines to a 48% of staff and students. At the high school, we're up to 69% of our students, 80% of our staff. So when you combine it, it's 70% of our staff and students are vaccinated. So then I looked at sixth graders, because the five to 11 are some of those sixth graders. So we only have 7.5% of our sixth graders so far. But that's pretty new, because it was November. Then I looked at the other three schools, just to see what was going on with them. And Meadowbrook has 3.8% students have been vaccinated. Maple Shade is up to 10%. And Mountain View is up to 12%. So it is a start.
And Kelly, is, when you were looking at some of the Birchwood data and the high school data, was there a pretty good percentage of folks who had gotten the first shot? A higher percentage than, say, the 45%?
Oh, yes. Yes, definitely. Actually, I probably have that. Because I wrote it down. Some have actually had boosters also. So. Well, I guess not that many. Maybe four or five have had one, one vaccine.
That's it.
Yeah, at Birchwood.
Well, the high school's moving closer.
And 70%, we got to reach 80%. So that's pretty good.
We can send out more communicate, we had sent out a communication to families, just regarding, basically, that we were, at this point, unclear as to vaccination status. And so if they voluntarily wanted to provide this building nurse that information, we can send out another letter. I think that, Kelly, would you agree? That seemed to get some response. People started to bring in information?
I think so, yes.
I mean, I think there are some people who didn't necessarily okay to go into the state system, but were willing to share it with the school nurse.
Exactly.
Can we go out to all the families to ask?
No, that one was just other ones we were unclear on. The next one.
The ones that are not, in a system of vaccination.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. It should be targeted, because the ones we already know, we don't need to ask. And we ask, we say the intention is we, we're trying to get to 80%.
We didn't go into.
Some people have incentive to report. Otherwise, they don't have incentive to report. They may not report. So if we say, you know, that DESI would potentially allow masks to be optional, that might incentivize.
If the building reaches 80%.
If we reach 80, yeah, if we're close.
And they do it building by building.
Right. I mean, high school is really the only one we're going to need anytime soon, I think.
Yeah. So maybe that's our, our next is a targeted communication with the high school families.
Yeah. Because I think the students may even, if they understood that point, that they might have the opportunity to be mask optional, then maybe there's more incentive to get vaccinated.
Right.
You know, I think when you're young, you think you're invincible. You don't want to get a vaccination. But I bet they're also tired of working masks. We'll have the opportunity to go optional. And like this, I can't see how Long Meadow would be any different than us. So if they were able to get the data, we may be there already. We just, we have got, we have all the data.
Well, we can, yeah, it depends on, I mean, anything that's in the state system, we can pull.
Right. But I think the state system is incomplete.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. So we have to ask all those who are not in the state system again, and tell them why we're asking. And with a little encouragement, you know, with the vaccination. Even if we get that from CDC, you know, verbatim, or something like that.
Now, Gordon, do you know what the method with the application process is to DESI for this?
Basically, it's an affirmation. It's similar to what we've done with other, other elements of COVID operations, where it's like a survey. Basically, I log into the survey. If we've reached the 80% at the high school, I fill out that information, and then goes to DESI. They process. And then eventually, we get some kind of response indicating that, given that we have reached the 80% as a building, this building would be mask optional. And I think I misstated in our last meeting, that, I didn't misstate, Long Meadow High School did put in for it, but they had not at that point heard back from DESI. I believe if they are starting to be mask-free at Long Meadow High School, I think it's this.
Because the other question, I haven't been able to find the answer to this, is as of late last week, 30 districts in the state had applied for waivers or sent in the application. 22 were approved. I can't find out, find why the other eight were denied.
Really?
Yeah. So it's not, I'm being led to believe it's not an automatic process, that they do.
They do review it.
Yeah, they review it.
Yeah.
But I haven't been able to.
They're going to mess with us, though, again.
Because I tried to figure out why these districts, if they had met the 80%, why they were denied. And I can't figure, I can't find information.
Do our families have to have reported it to the state in order for it to count? Or you just docked the teeth again? That's good.
If they are willing to report it to the building nurse, that's where we're keeping our information. And all Kerry and I are getting our percentages.
Okay. Does the state pay with that?
Yeah. It basically falls on my shoulders to affirm that this is accurate. If it's inaccurate, then I pay the consequences.
I gotta believe we're pretty close, though, because with 76% of the residents in East Long Meadow, we certainly have more incentive than the general population. I gotta believe we're pretty close. We just have to get that information.
Right. So we can send another communication out. And I know that Tammy, you have a, I know it's an adult vaccination clinic, but you have something coming up, correct?
Yes. On December 21st, Tuesday, over at the Senior Center, from 1:00 to 4:00, it's available to adults. So anyone 18 and up who needs first shot, second shot, a booster, they can sign right up. There's plenty of flyers up on the town website also.
Okay. Now, flyer to our staff, so that, you know, if we get over the 80% at the high school with staff, and we move more with Birchwood too.
Tammy, what vaccination would that be? Do you know? People might want to know.
All three.
Oh, really?
Oh.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Yep. Yes, the, the mobile vaccination program offers, basically, it's like à la carte. And they offer just about everything at the clinic.
Great. Get this signed up. How does that work?
There, walk-ins, walk-ins are allowed. Registration is encouraged. I think Gordon said he's got a flyer that he could set out. But also, I'm free to work with the schools to set up clinics for student staff. Whatever you guys need, I'm there to help everybody, because vaccination is a way to get the, get the numbers down and to keep the kids in school.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the exemptions in terms of close contact if you're vaccinated. That's why the high school has almost zero close contacts.
Yeah. I wonder if we, if we could explore that on a Saturday or something. For students.
In terms of a vaccination clinic?
I wouldn't do it during school, school hours.
What involves a fire department, doesn't it?
I don't know if it still does. We did in the past last year when we hosted one, Tammy, at the middle school. We had Chief Morissette there and paramedics, as well as our nurses. I don't know if that's still the way they set up the clinics.
So they have, they have all their medical staff on site. But it's always wise when you're going to set up a clinic to make sure that the, the fire department has EMS on standby in case anything happens.
Who, who gives the vaccination?
I'm sorry. Say that again?
Who, who actually gives the vaccination? Because our last clinic last year, our nurses and the East Long Meadow paramedics were giving the actual vaccinations.
Yeah. So we, so we wouldn't have to be doing that. The, the agency that they send to us will do it.
Okay. And we can do that, whether it be adult or student age?
Yep, they offer, they offer for every age.
Okay, great.
So in terms of, you had mentioned earlier, Tammy, that 15 or 14, I believe, of the 76 residents who are currently positive were age 18 and under. Kelly, how has that been impacting our schools so far in terms of those students? Are we seeing a lot of students out in terms of close contacts? To Gordon's point, vaccinations are becoming more available. What does that look like so far?
Well, last year, last week was a busy week. We had a positive in every single school. We had a lot of close contacts, but a lot of it was due to community exposure. So I think we had nine close contacts last week. But we had positives in every school. This week, we have a positive in two schools so far. So I'm not really sure who those 14 positives are. You know, they could be, they could go to a different school. I'm not really sure who they are.
Okay. I mean, that's one thing that we've talked about.
So that's just all.
Go ahead, Tammy, sorry.
Those were all, all case, I'm sorry, those were all cases who were 18 and under. So some of them could be under one, two years old. Some of them might be over 18 and might not be in the school.
Right.
We have seen an uptick in some of our, not in-school transmission, but just cases that are impacting our schools.
Yeah, there's a challenge. Go ahead, Kelly.
No, it's just, you know, we, the parents, like I said from the beginning, are calling us and letting us know that, you know, there's a positive in their household, or, you know, they're positive themselves. So we have a really good handle on it. So some of those close contacts were due to family exposure. And like I said, nine were from in-school exposure. And like 50, I think 40 were from community exposure. So, you know, we're not seeing a lot in school, because parents are telling us when, you know, when their children are being exposed or are positive. So it hasn't been that bad. Last week was just a bad week with all the community exposures.
I really do have to commend not only our nurses, but also our families, because their communication has been incredible. In looking at our, our contacts, as we look to see, okay, are there close contacts in school? A lot of times, it's the families looking, seeing that, you know, doing that daily symptom check and keeping their child out and then go get tested. And so it reduces the close contacts, especially if the child didn't even get to school. Those symptoms appeared on the weekend, then they go get tested. And we, we still have technically a positive in our schools, but we, the close contacts are further reduced. We're finding that the, the challenging part with close contacts is more the community exposure, you know, whether it be an athletic team, or in a case that was close to home for us, you know, a after-school and before-school program, where it's challenging to do the same type of close contact tracing that we do with our nurses and with the help of Tammy and her staff. So, you know, we, on these community exposures, we're just basically told. And so then we have to act, which is, is challenging, I know, for our parents. And because you're quarantined. And because um you're you're quarantined at the moment.
I have a question about the protocol.
Sure.
So you're saying that this is happening in the community. So if students are masked and they're at a at a sports team or um wherever they are. And they they're around someone that tests a positive for COVID, but they're masked. Does that still mean when they go to school that they still, they can, can they still go to school?
So it really depends on, and Tammy and Kelly, feel free to jump in on this. Um it really depends. So if it's an out-of-school exposure, then we are really the second group to get that information, if you will. Um that first group could be, if it's an athletic team, the coach, the team um working with the local um health director. And then once they determine close contacts, they but they're letting us know they are close contacts. See, you know what I'm saying? So once we hear the word of close contact, we have to go into our protocols.
And close contact means you're around them for more than fifteen minutes, right? And it doesn't matter if we had a mask on or not.
Well, it's tough. I mean, I'm open up to the health experts, but uh it's it's yeah, it's it's hard. I think especially with, I'll just use basketball, because um you're indoors. Yes, you may be masked. If you're scrimmaging, it's really hard to know. You know, you have five players versus five players. Have they had fifteen minutes of less than three feet? Hard to know.
Cause it's that too.
So but we're not, we're not going through that. We're the recipient of that information once they've gone through it.
But I think the shift too is that last year, we weren't fully open when basketball and other types of indoor sports were being run. We still weren't back the way we are right now. So I think that that's gonna take some collaboration
Right.
between our department and um health and our nursing department and rec. Because that was not a hurdle we had to clear last year.
Right.
And we don't want to see that become something that now, we already looked at our attendance.
And also.
And that was concerning. So we want to make sure that we're really making sure everyone has the same understanding of those protocols that we can try, yes, to make sure that we're mitigating this and keeping it out of the schools to prevent community or in-school transmission. But at the same time, not pushing kids out who maybe don't need to be out because then we're we're not going to see what we need in terms of attendance.
Right. And and I think this is new um for, because last year, I believe the the rec basketball programs were more skills and drills. And so if you're doing skills and drills, you're probably going to be paired off. So if you're, you know, you have a two-person cohort. Um so that's easy in terms of contact tracing. I think when you get into full scrimmaging, now it's harder.
And maybe we can learn from, maybe Athletic Director McGee might be able to provide some additional insight. Maybe to talk to maybe Donna and talk to other folks who are maybe having to now think about this in a very different way because he's experienced it more from that administrative level, so to speak. But that might be some.
We have had indoor sports in the high school.
Right. We weren't all the way back open at that time, but later on we were. So that might be a good spot.
They started everything later last year to try and get vaccines rolling.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so we're we're back to the normal winter basketball season with park and rec basketball starting up and everything else. And that's why we may be running into these issues. But I think to expand to your point, Sarah, to expand, you know, bring in Kevin and everybody else, Donna, to see what we can do to mitigate what's going on in these buildings.
Tammy, quick question on um vaccination. If in outside of schools, if a child's vaccinated, does that exclude them from being a close contact? You can say an athletic team?
So it is um across the board with the state guidance. Um you are exempt from quarantining as a close contact if you're fully vaccinated and you are exhibiting no symptoms. But if you, if as a as a sports team or any type of entity, if you want to make any other kind of policy of your own, you can change that. But but no, if you don't, uh it isn't different for sports.
That's not information recs currently gathering, I guess. I mean, I've signed my kids up recently for sports and they're not gathering vaccination.
Schools?
They are.
They are.
They are.
See, we're playing lacrosse.
I am working with.
Connecticut.
I am working with the department right now to kind of uh brush off the uh policies that they had put in place last year and to work with the um coaches and then to have some information to put out to the um parents and family members uh to know the appropriate uh measures to take.
Perfect. That's terrific. Thank you, Tammy, for working on that.
Just to talk to Donna and see if we can start to gather in information.
Sure, I think it's a coordinated effort.
I think it is too, but yeah.
Tammy's office and um Donna and us and um our nursing staff to, you know, figure out what information we have, what other information might we need? And also what's the appropriate way to collect that information?
Because if they start having, and I'm not, obviously I'm not involved in this, but if they have traveling teams again, I'm not sure if they're then you're going into, you know, cities just like. I mean, I think it's worth it's worthwhile.
It's probably also worthwhile to set up a, we get a youth vaccination clinic in the off-hours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that you'd get a huge turnout because probably those that mostly want to get vaccinated have. But if we could make it easier and I don't know, open it up to others now, I don't know.
Also, if if they know, and Tammy, is this um something that the health department is getting out? That if if you're vaccinated now, you know, available um age five and up. If you're vaccinated, you're not going to be a close contact shooter athletic.
Well, and so I think this has to all be part of this one. We should do one um informational push.
Yeah.
And get all those, all those pieces together in
Bullets.
brief bullet points and get it to everybody.
Well, yeah. Just brief directed at me.
Yes. And no, but just so people read it, you know, here are the things that vaccination will get for you. If you're on the fence about getting vaccinated, you know, if we get to eighty percent, if you're a close contact, you know, there's only three bullet points, I think, two or three, so.
And from a community standpoint, if uh you know, you're participating in travel teams and competitive teams, vaccination excludes you from being a close contact and having quarantine.
That's important.
So.
So maybe it's a combined information.
So are all the nine quarantines non-vaccinated students? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
But we basically are given that information.
Right, but so that's a choice that families are making though. But if they know in advance, that if you make the choice to not get vaccinated, which is pretty acceptable, then you would be considered a close contact. If you choose to get vaccinated, you wouldn't be a close contact, so you wouldn't have to to quarantine. Well, that's.
Even if they're three feet apart, they're wearing masks, they're asymptomatic, you're, they're still gonna have to be quarantined.
It was only nine.
There was nine in-school close contacts. There was.
Oh, there's nine quarantines, she said.
In school. We had.
Kelly, can you clarify that?
Yes, we had forty close contacts from community exposure. We had nine from exposure in school and we had seven from exposure to family.
So all of those forty are non-vaccinated?
Yes.
See, but again.
But wait a minute.
It's a family choice.
We aren't sure about the forty not being vaccinated because we don't know, and correct me if I'm wrong, if those sports teams gathered information.
No, I checked, I checked them.
Okay.
We had two that had two vaccines, but it hadn't been two weeks.
I got you.
But next time, hopefully there'll be more that are fully vaccinated.
Thank you for clarifying.
But they're now built.
Right, so.
That's what I'm saying. So it's now an option for every family and every student.
Any more of the information um sheet
Yeah.
probably needs to come out because now with uh a younger population having the availability of vaccines, hopefully that goes up, but maybe people don't know that yet and they haven't had a chance to get there. Um so that's.
Well, and they don't know the incentive to it because if they're at jeopardy of uh being a close contact and having to quarantine or not, that might put them over the fence or not. I can't say what I would do if I had a five-year-old. My teenagers are both vaccinated, but as soon as they could be, they want it to be and they are. So and then they have freedom now because of that. So it now is a family decision.
Right.
But I.
Saying, if you're vaccinated, you can stay in school now. And if you're not, then you have to go home and be quarantined.
That's what we're doing.
I think we can, but another layer to that, but another layer to that, because we don't necessarily want to shut doors to public education based on a non-mandated vaccine. So the other piece of that, which we did mention to Kelly, and she was going to do some work with the nurses at their meeting this week. And for the fact finding around how it's going in other districts is, do we need to start to look at test and stay? So that way there, we have another option to families who maybe are in that five to eleven age group who aren't necessar- or in beyond, who aren't necessarily thinking vaccination is the right move for them, to offer another opportunity to stay in school and not have to feel the pressure, vaccine or I'm out.
Yeah.
They offer another option.
I get that. Are we gonna have Sam on that though?
Yes, no, we would, it would have to come back as an agenda item.
It has to be an agenda in here.
But just so that, you know, like as those numbers kept rising, we did mention to Gordon and to um Kelly to start to think about where we are.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think anybody could be surprised that we're into the holidays and the numbers are going.
No.
Right.
The only difference between this year and last year is the vaccines available.
Yeah, I know, but look at the world as a whole, right? If you go anywhere but schools, I know.
Yeah, no mask.
The world is normal. We're here with these things on. Our poor kids have had a roller coaster over two years.
Oh, I get it. Trust me.
So if we can get there.
Happening outside of schools that's causing you all, you know, I mean, it's really not the schools that are.
Right.
One thing I do want to add, I think that sometimes the parents are feeling a little bit. I know that somebody that's up in my class was their parents had clinic vaccination for their kids. And as soon as they could get to the pediatrician, they like got to the clinic. They wanted to go to their pediatrician. So I think that would maybe be, you know, uh a little bit of a holdup too in terms of, because I think the parents want.
Just scheduling.
Yeah.
With the pediatrician.
Yeah, I can see that. Not all of them are giving it because
Right, right.
that's the, that's their position's choice. That's why the clinics.
Well, that's why we have the availability through the town.
Right.
On a Saturday morning or something.
Yeah.
I mean, it's worth it.
Yeah. Stuff to look at still.
Absolutely.
It's good to be proactive though.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does anyone have anything else for Tammy or Kelly before we bid them adieu for tonight? Thank you both. Tammy, it was a pleasure having you here for your first meeting. Kelly, always a pleasure to have you present.
Thank you and have a good night.
You too. Thanks for that conversation. We haven't had an update relative to health. I know it took us a little bit of time and quite some time, so that was, it was good to hear where we currently are and get that accurate data um to inform our decisions as we go forward.
You know, I'll contact Tammy tomorrow and see what we can put together as just an informational, I guess, release, if you want, to give to some of the families, you know. She's comfortable with because it's more than just school.
Yeah.
As we know, you know, so here are the, here are the facts, so to speak, in terms of what can happen and what your choices are.
And it's important for everyone to recognize where we were in terms of school being open last year relative to everything else. So we're now dealing with the impacts of outside of school transmission impacting our in-person instruction. We weren't at this point last year. That's a huge difference. And that takes time for everyone to get coordinated and on the same page.
It'd be interesting to know what our picture looks like now versus a year ago.
A year ago.
We can.
Tammy and Kelly.
She said, she mentioned, Tammy mentioned that she was willing to kind of do some of that research the first.
Yeah, I mean, it's all relative, you know, we we go on these spikes, but the spikes are relative as well.
I I think the variants were somewhat of a game changer, you know, because the Delta variant is still the dominant one. We'll see if Omicron, if that's the way you pronounce it, becomes the dominant one. But uh the majority of cases, I think, across the country, it's still Delta variant.
Yeah.
Right, so we have our SMART goals next on the agenda. And Gordon, you said that the leadership team was here.
Should have the leadership team uh hopefully raising their hand and uh coming in.
Thank you.
Alright. You don't want to have them raise their hand?
They are. They're raising them. They are raising them.
I just thought it's a good exercise as we have students raise their hands up every day.
Excellent. Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. Welcome back, Mr. Allen. Nice to see you.
Mr. Allen's back.
Nice to see you here. Connor, how you leaning? Trying to see what I can see. Renee.
Dr. Wells.
Hi, Dr. Wells.
Roddy, Mrs. Antonello, Mr. Page.
Gang's all here. There's Mr. Fredette, right? Is that everyone now? No, Mr. Wright.
There's Mr. Fredette.
And Marge. And Miss Shay.
And Steve Pearson.
Yeah.
I just keep.
Are they in the audience?
Yeah. Yeah, there they are. One more hand.
Steve, Rob, Steve's on it.
Yep.
Perfect. Good evening, everyone. Alright, so Gordon, you're gonna take us through with their support and Heather.
Yeah, so uh we have our SMART goals that we'd like to present to you. And obviously, there's some action steps that um are ongoing. And to frame this, we know that um getting through this pandemic, which unfortunately continues to um give us challenges, uh it's gonna be a process that's gonna take more than one year. You know, as we uh support students and we bring them back. Uh and it's it's something that um we'll talk about as we go through the SMART goals. But uh we're definitely seeing in schools, you know, in terms of learning deficit. Just uh adjusting back to the structure of school is challenging. Uh and we'll we'll get into some more um details as we go through. So we have the entire leadership team here. Thank you, everybody, for being here. We have uh Ms. Brown ready to take us through the slides here. Um this is, I know everyone's favorite slide, what is a SMART goal? It's specific, measurable, relevant, timely. I always want to keep in mind that every student should be in our thoughts as we're developing these goals. I know that you know the district mission and theory of action, so I won't read that for you. And then we get to, remember, what we're trying to do with these goals, it's it's not that one is more important than the other. So we're not numbering them. Uh it's really that they all feed into the cycle and connect to each other. One that um really talks about education from a standpoint of more than just academics is this goal here where we're supporting the whole child. And uh we did tweak this a little bit, so it's focusing on universal design for learning, social, emotional, education, and cultural responsiveness. Uh and if we can put that type of focus in all of our buildings, at the end of the year, some of the things we hope to see are things like eighty percent or higher of our students responding favorably to questions around their own well-being. Because if they're not feeling safe and secure, it doesn't matter how great the lesson plan or the person implementing the lesson plan is, they're not learning. You know, that's something that's been proven in research for years. We like to see ninety percent or higher of our students report that uh um they're learning and their community and classrooms are supportive, supportive and conducive to learning. And so these are some of the things that we're putting out in our surveys to see where our students are at. Ninety-five percent, and this is key, are higher of staff. This staff are not immune to the effects of this pandemic. Um you know, people are are tired. Uh we still have incredible creative work and diligence going on throughout our schools. But uh it's been a long process and an ever-changing one. And so that has a has a toll in and of itself. Um eighty percent of staff will report that there's been effective use of collaborative time. You'll see as we go through our, during our action plans, that we've implemented more um possibilities for collaborative time, especially at the elementary school. Um and then district chronic absenteeism, and we will be able to break out for you absences that are COVID-related and absences that are not COVID-related. So we'll have that. We'd like to see at the end of the year, our rate be below four percent. Four percent is where we were um at the end of last year.
How is data being collected relative to the fourth bullet? The eighty percent of staff reporting there's been an effective use of collaborative time?
So that's coming through um staff surveys uh as we, so we're, we put in place our collaborative time model. And we have that, and we think the elementary principals will speak to that tonight. But what we want to see after, and we'll also speak to it, um I think when we talk about some of the training we gave our department heads. And we also then opened up that training to uh other staff members. You didn't have to be a department head to go and get that training. And so hopefully we provided a structure that's making sense and allows them to attack one problem during that time. Uh not necessarily be all over the map with a zillion problems um in the collaborative time.
Okay.
Let it go to the next one. So one of the things as an action step in making this happen is the professional. So one of the things as an action step in making this happen is the professional development and is the use of our surveys. I know Ms. Brown can take us further through some of the things that developmental designs and innocent classrooms are doing. Developmental design started with our elementary schools last year and have continued into this year. Setting up and helping skill build around social, emotional education and support, not just in terms of. Adding on, but how does it integrate with what I'm doing in the classroom? And that's a key. And then innocent classrooms has just begun with us this year at the secondary level. And those professional development sessions are going quite well and I know you've found you can say more about both of those.
They're both, both developmental designs and innocent classroom are around creating, strengthening teacher-student relationships. And, you know, in, in, in order to create those inclusive classroom environments. And like Mr. Smith said, in those kinds of environments, that's where we're gonna have kids who achieve the most. And so, you know, obviously developmental design is focused more on things that elementary teachers would do, like morning meetings and. Different things like that, the language that they're using. And then innocent classroom will kind of go more into just understanding adolescents. And really finding the good in all of our students. And really understanding behaviors as communication, what are they actually communicating to us? All of that, so that ultimately, like Mr. Smith said, it's connected to academic achievement.
And for the, we can build the skills and the understanding. Then hopefully we're setting up classrooms in a way that allows our students to feel safe, feel secure and engage the learning. And so that's, that's the overall goal. If we can do that, we should see those benchmarks happen or at least getting close.
And relative to that, are we, are these trainings also open to our administrators? So that they're able to then provide feedback when they're doing unannounced observations or announced observations or a learning walk in the classroom relative to ensuring that. The types of routines or morning meetings or conversations are being facilitated in alignment with the two curricula that you've discussed.
So developmental designs met with, with administrators as well as the, the PDs. And then innocent classrooms, it has a similar model where they're meeting with administrators beforehand and of course the administrators are part of the actual PD. But the idea is just to build that capacity. Thank you.
And then the pre-meetings are, both groups have been fantastic in terms of listening to. Some of the, the pieces that make ELPS unique. And so how might it be best to set up professional development sessions? Yeah, both groups have been fantastic. Moving on to the next slide. One of the things that the pandemic has kind of knocked around in terms of timeliness, unfortunately. Is all of you know that three years ago now, we started our diversity and equity steering committee at the district level. That brought us into, after some training and sort of coming together as a committee. It brought us into looking at doing an equity audit. That equity audit was accomplished. And last year really was supposed to be most of the unpacking. Some of that unpacking of the equity audit did happen. We did make presentations. We also had. Groups meeting to further unpack it. At the end of the year, the leadership team and members of the steering committee did get together. And start looking at what we're calling our equity roadmap and how that all of this is connected to. Some of the things we're doing in other professional development with developmental design and innocent classroom. One of the terms that I've taken from the group that's been facilitating this, which is the Center for Leadership and Educational Excellence. As they looked at some of the recommendations, they said, what would be the most or the highest leverage? Point in terms of the recommendations that can get you action the quickest? And so one of the things that we looked at and figured would help immediately is if we start to look at. One, some of the work we're doing with our teachers and just making sure they understand this work. They've heard about in. They've heard the buzzwords for quite a long time, but what does that really mean? How's it break down into your specific classroom? And so that's where professional development has been going on and will continue. But then two, the second bullet up there is the leadership team who has the legal. Responsibility for hiring for. So it's a principal for a specific school or if it's a district administrator for possibly a district position and so forth. Going through and looking at what are our recruiting processes, what are, are our process for interviewing? How do we set up committees? And so we've been doing some work around that, which has really been quite good. And so those are two action steps that should have impact eventually in terms of impacting system and building culture. There's also at the bottom, although it's not live. On the, on obviously the PV PDF copy in the. Shared in the folder for the school committee, but we can get to those live links. There's a lot of. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education guidance on this work that's out. One of the nice things that. If we didn't have a pandemic, we'd already be two years ahead of Desi on that, but their, their guidance is very good and. So we've been unpacking that as well. And then also there is another link there. Ms. Brown, that link.
Learning policy incident?
Right. Is that part of?
It's just more about how. The impact of diversifying teachers has on kids, particularly marginalized kids in terms of their academic achievement. I also want to say that this has been funded through JESSIE as well. The Student Opportunity Act allowed folks to apply for competitive grant. To get funds that were connected to your Student Opportunity Act plan. And so all of this is being funded by that grant.
Do you know when that grant is set to expire?
We've already expended the.
Okay, so in terms of forward movement with this work, where we'll be looking for funding sources?
There's a teacher diversification pilot grant that I also applied for, but we have not heard that yet. And it seems like there's something new week to week, so I'm keeping my eyes on it.
Thanks, Heather.
So that's, you know, we're not only getting other resources, as Ms. Brown has said, going after competitive grants. But, you know, our leadership team is participating in also individual professional development that they may go on to. And I'm participating in the Mass Association of Superintendent Ready Work where they have. Twenty-four superintendents, twelve white, twelve people of superintendents of color. And we're working through, what is, what does leadership look like as you move districts with this type of work? And so there's a lot of, a lot of good professional development out there. We're trying to bring it and package it the right way for ELPS. The last one under this is something that. The, the grant money has certainly helped us and I think Dr. Welsh is, I can't see that far in terms of the screen. But she put in for a grant as well and it's helping us do something that we've tried to do in. Small steps over the course of probably the last five to seven years, but never really have done, accomplished enough. To really have a good handle on what changes, if any, should we be making at the preschool level? Both from the idea of how we transition from early childhood into preschool and then what we do with our preschool model. And so we are working this year with Interlocking Connections to work with our preschool teams. And really evaluate all of that and then hopefully have some recommendations. I know Dr. Welsh can go into more detail on that. In terms of the work that we're doing this fall and then we'll be doing into the early winter. Hi, Dr. Welsh.
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all. Very briefly, I will just say that. We really value the partnership that we already have with Interlocking Connections. We contract with them. To provide behavioral supports for individual students as well as groups of students. And also some social skill supports and training again for individual or groups of students. And so I had the opportunity to apply for a small grant that was specifically geared. Towards preschool. And I, it seemed to me that it was a good time to take a look at our current program. And the current schedule that we have in place now to look at what our colleagues are doing in other districts. In, in particular, looking at how we transition students from early intervention. How we utilize the staff that we have and ultimately to make sure that we are best servicing our youngest. Students, meaning those students in preschool. Students in preschool receive a lot of services and, and obviously the intention of that. Is to better prepare them for the years that then lie ahead. So if we're talking about educating the whole child. We really have to make sure that we give them a strong foundation to do that. Interlocking Connections had enough context with our district. As well as the expertise in the area to streamline the process a little bit. So they've been working very, very diligently with our preschool staff and with our related services team. Also with the special education teachers that focus specifically. On students with autism because that's a large population at that level. And at this point, they're collecting data. They're making excellent progress according to the information that I have and should have a report for us in January. Which I am really looking forward to see.
Does that outreach, Dr. Welsh, include finding out? How local community-based programs are operating so that we're able to see? Not just how we are performing as a district relative to our preschool model, but how we can either support community-based programs with their instructional models? That when we receive those students in kindergarten, there's a sense of alignment?
Yes, actually, part of the, part of what I wrote into the grant allowed. For some resources for our staff to go and visit programs. As well as for Interlocking Connections to research some programs as well. So we are looking at. The diversity of what's up, what's being offered in local communities and in our own community as well. So it's, it's pretty broad in that regard.
Thank you.
So the exciting thing is hopefully we'll have those court that we can share in January at some point. Impact how we look at budget and what we may want to do in terms of. Making any changes to our preschool model. And then I believe this is the last action step under the whole child. And so we continue our work with our multi-tiered support system teams that are in each of the buildings. I know that Ms. Brown has been going to some of these meetings and then also providing the teams training in Panorama. Specific to interventions and so forth, but Ms. Brown can say that much more articulately.
Not necessarily. The MTSS teams definitely have two different things that they're looking at. You know, overall trends in the school so that they can identify barriers for kids and remove them. But the other task and the test is. At hand is utilizing all of our survey data, all of our assessment data. We have it housed in one place on the Panorama dashboard. To identify kids who might need extra supports, whether they're academic or social, emotional and then. Determining what would be best to support those kids and then monitoring those interventions to make sure they're, they're working for kids and if not, what we need to do differently. So the, the PD, as Mr. Smith said, has really been around trying to make sure folks feel comfortable with the data dashboard. To utilize it to its full potential.
And this is a continuation to a lot of the work we did with our teams last year, but I think it's finally coming to fruition where. Teams are getting it because they're able to dive into the work where last year I think it was more of a theory almost. You know, that this could happen if you engage and utilize these things. And now so it's really nice to see that it actually is happening and making sense to teams as they engage. Not only the dashboard, but more importantly, what they're putting in place based on trends and so forth. So that's, that's gonna be ongoing this school year.
Is attendance data in Panorama as well? Yes.
Attendance was on that first slide. So what are the action steps that we're taking to try to improve?
So we can speak to that as we open up to the school.
Alright.
That might be an intervention, right? If the child's not coming to school, that's obviously a problem. So what are we doing to make sure the child's getting to school?
So if it comes to that level, it becomes much more individualized. But to the, I think the point that, the question that Mr. Julio had and the point that you were making. They can see it also as attendance for the school. We can see it for the district in the school, so they can break it down in numbers. And so it's faster in terms of being on top of. You know, the, the original, if you go back probably now five to seven years, that original intent was communication between the school and home. When you're seeing three absences in a row or, you know, five absences in a row, what are you doing about it? And so we've been, we've been acting on it all the way through. Panorama helps us do it even faster.
So when you pull up the attendance for that day, for example, it will show you who's absent. You can see why. And then they'll have trends. So if Johnny's been absent for the past five days, they have trending error down. So there's lots of different ways to, to make sure that we're keeping on top of it. And then the intervention would be, okay, what do we do to try to make sure this child's getting to school?
Who in the school is responsible for contacting the home? Is it like the counselor? Is it the administrator?
So it's.
The teacher?
Yeah, so, so it's not that necessarily the teachers, all the teachers can contact and just, you know, send. All our students have emails, so they can send. Our teachers have also set up Google Classroom, so they have all that information. But if you're turn, in terms of seeing, say, three absences in a row where we haven't heard anything. That's gonna come from either an administrator in the building or possibly a counselor in the building. Elementary level, it's gonna be the building principal. I suppose it could be the guidance counselor, but generally it has been the building principal. There's not a lot of staff that. Principals, assistant principals. And in some cases, people have gone out to the home.
Yes.
And how many absences are students allowed to have before it impacts their grade or passing the class or?
So the high school obviously has a different standard because now they're building credits. And Mr. Page and Mr. Wright can certainly speak to that, but I believe it's nine absences, unexcused absences. And you lose credit for a class. And so they need, you know, teachers are on top of that very fast in terms of talking to the student. But also the administration and counseling team needs to be on top of that as well. So that no one's caught, you know, unaware that they've hit that, that nine and, you know, well, nothing was said. How did I get here? Yeah, so those are great questions.
I know we're gonna talk about it further, but have we found that there's any like families within town that are? And I'm talking from experience where from the parental side, they're skitterish, they're nervous, they're keeping their kids home. They hear there's an incident longer. Or without, they don't have to, but they do. Are we finding that or is it pretty?
I mean, certainly the principals and assistant principals can speak more specifically to that. I can give you an example of sort of homeschooling has come down. But it hasn't come down to the level that it was pre-pandemic. So we pretty much doubled our homeschoolers last year. We have reduced, but it's not to the level of pre-pandemic. So that would tell me that there are people who are worried about, you know, maybe more than just COVID, but other things as well.
Alright, no, because I just, I know of experience where entire family, you're in school. And they have here one little incident happens in the school, they pull their kids out. And you're like, now you gotta get a test. So we're not experiencing that really, I hope.
I, I can't specifically say whether we're experiencing that. Maybe the principals, so we're starting with the elementary principals.
They need any, you know, how do you reach out?
I think we have our elementary principals who are gonna speak to this slide.
I'm, I'm actually gonna speak. We split the three slides up, so. I'm gonna start with this goal and then Michael and Renee will address the other ones. So for this, well, we, for all of our goals, we focused on what we have in common at the three elementary schools. So the first bullet, all three elementary. So, um, the first bullet, all three elementary schools will provide second step social and emotional curriculum. Uh, second step, for those of you who aren't familiar, is an approach to building supportive communities for every child. Through social emotional learning. And there are four units that are broken up into twenty lessons. Uh, the four units are growth mindset and goal setting. Emotion management. Empathy and kindness. And problem solving. And at, uh, Mountain View and Maple Shade. The school psychologists, the adjustment counselor and the guidance counselor. Are teaching the lessons while the classroom teachers are in the room. And at Meadowbrook, it is the two guy, the guidance, the two guidance counselors that are teaching the lessons to the school. Um, my new adjustment counselor, Nick Hutchinson. Um, has told both Norma Campbell and I that he's been blown away by how much the children. In third grade already understand growth mindset. And the brain's capacity to grow, and he thinks it's because of the foundation they've received. At Meadowbrook in second step, um. So that's been a great thing, he's teaching all of the third grade classes. Um, Mrs. Pelzik is teaching the fourth grade and Miss Campbell's teaching the fifth.
And so remember last year during budget time. We talked about, um, knowing we needed more adjustment counselors. So, uh, Mr. Hutchinson is one of our adjustment counselors at Mountain View, and we also have a new adjustment counselor at Maple Shade. And so, and that's really been, um, tremendous in terms of the boost to support, uh, children and. Certainly, uh, in advancing our curriculum, um, social emotional curriculum, but more so, right? Uh, he's working with staff and students, correct, Mrs. Antonella?
Yes, mainly with students, um, he, he meets with students who have. Um, IEP goals around social, emotional and behavioral, um, expectations and goals. Um, but he also meets with groups, small groups, obviously during covid, we can't have, um. Big lunch groups like we used to, but, um, he does have small lunch groups just like Miss Campbell does. Um, so yes, he's mainly working only with the fifth grade for teaching second step, but with students throughout the school.
So the second bullet, as Gordon and Heather were speaking about earlier, um. Is with regard to developmental designs. And the focus that all three buildings, um, have this year is to ensure that. Community circles or morning meetings are held in every classroom. Um, and developmental design is a research base-based teaching strategy. To build relationships in the school building, social skills and promote a safe community. Um, we had, as was stated before, professional development last year when we had those days before school started. We had, um, four full days of PD last year with them and we had one full day this year. Um, the students, there's definitely a difference. I was in a community circle this morning, um, in the fifth grade and. There's just so many components to it that help the students start their day. Um, they have a greeting, they usually have a motivational quote, they have some kind of a group activity. Um, they're just really great ways to start the day, I'd have to say, out of all the professional development I've been to in. The past maybe ten years, I found this to be the most worthwhile and, um, really. Just helps set the tone in the building. And then finally, all three elementary schools are accessing River Valley Counseling Services for students. So River Valley is an opportunity for students who might not otherwise be able to access therapy. Outside of school, it's provided during the day in the school setting. So at Meadowbrook right now, there are five students receiving services and two referrals that are pending. Maple Shade has ten students receiving services and three are pending. And Mountain View has four receiving services and six students are pending, uh, referrals. Right now, um, the counselor, for example, that was assigned to Mountain View. Has just left River Valley for another position, so they're trying to replace. Um, that position and they are having similar experiences with hiring that we are. So, uh, they do have someone coming, uh, the supervisor now comes to provide the services for the students. Until they've hired someone, but, um, it's very beneficial. Um, many of our students that need counseling, um. It would have to happen, you know, when parents are at work. Or parents don't have access, and yet many counselors have waiting lists. So this gives, uh, the kids who need it the most, the opportunity during the school day.
And that's been, that's been a very successful partnership and, uh, certainly as you heard those numbers. We need it now more than ever as we come back, uh, you know, fully in school.
I think the River Valley, since I've been on this field for however many years now, I think that a single is one of the best things we've done. It just, the fact that the kids don't have to worry about the parents getting where they have to be, and it's embedded, it's just.
Yeah.
It's one of my top things that we've done, I think.
I, I would agree, it's, uh, it's, it was challenging to get it off the ground, especially at the elementary level. Um, but, uh, it's definitely, uh, helped us immensely.
Gordon, I was just gonna add, didn't, um, you started that partnership, it was two years, was prior to the pandemic.
Yeah, it was pretty bad.
Pandemic slowed it down, but luckily, again, it's one of those things that the district was lucky, I think that, um. That we had started that relationship with, with them, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Are we meeting the needs in terms of counseling? Do we feel like it's a must though?
Um, you know, I think. Well, certainly, I, I think I would let the principals answer that because they'd answer it better than I would, but we're. We're doing it better than we've done before, I can say that, uh, and we have a lot more people. That, uh, are students that need additional support than we've ever had before.
Hmm.
Um, so I'm really thankful that the committee, uh, approved two adjustment counselors at the elementary level and. You know, that River Valley had a staff ready to go at the beginning of the school year. Uh, because that additional support. Means that these students have come up through all other supports that will continue at the building level. But now it's, it's also River Valley and, you know, so it's. To Ms. Martin, about your point, um, that's, uh, that's been huge. Yeah, so. Um, but certainly we can, um, it's a question we can pose to our next two principals or assistant principals who are coming up. About some of the secondary steps.
Good evening, everybody, um. For, what's that, Gordon?
I said, it sounds like it's Mr. Martin.
It is, it is, um, hello, everyone, uh, before I begin, I just, uh. Wanted to acknowledge something, um, we welcome back Tim. Uh, it is great to have him back, um, you know, when the year began. Uh, I, I don't think any of us thought that when December rolled around that we would have the, the benefit of, of having him join us. Um, but on behalf of, uh, the entire Burchen Park Middle School community, we could not be anymore, um. More happy to have him back and, um, we are so grateful for all of the support. Um, from the school committee. Um, in assisting Burchen Park Middle School during this time, um, and we are incredibly grateful to. All of the families and the students for continuing to embody the Burchen Park. Middle School positivity that Tim had defined, um. And they kept going in his absence, so we just wanted to thank, um, everybody for that. Um, and I think that's appropriate for, uh, when the, the goal of the whole child because. A child, um, is contextualized by the community in which they live. Um, and if, if what we have seen this year is any indication, um, the child is healthy. Because East Long Meadow is an incredibly healthy. Community, um, so some of the action steps that we have, um, put in place in order to, to meet the needs of the child, um. Is our, uh, social emotional advisory, um, advisories have always been a, um. A foundational component of Burchen Park Middle School and the success of Burchland, um, and we just, uh. We revised how we implement the advisories, uh, this year, so rather than meeting first thing in the morning. Um, two times a week, we have increased the amount of time, um, that the advisories meet. And we pushed it back later in the morning, um, because I think that'll come as no surprise. Um, when I say that, uh, middle school students are less likely to talk about their feelings. Um, around seven thirty in the morning, so pushing it off. Um, until about, you know, nine thirty, it gives them, you know, uh, it gives them a couple of classes. Under their feet to wake up, to energize and then engage, uh, in the social emotional activities. Um, so that has been successful so far. Um, we have over twenty students currently, uh, enrolled in River Valley Counseling, um. And as we continue to, to meet with teams and continue to, to meet with parents and continue to have our student assistant meetings. Um, you know, we, we continue to refer, uh, when needed to, to give the, the specific. Uh, supports to the students that need it the most. Um, the Panorama surveys that have been discussed, um, already, um, help fuel. Uh, the, the, the social emotional lessons themselves, so based on the, the needs. Of what we're seeing, uh, from the surveys, um, we're able to, to, to tailor the, the lessons to, to meet those needs. Um, we are so thankful for the innocent classroom, um, we, uh. Um, have had a, a great experience working with them so far. Um, and the two bullet points, uh, the next two bullet points actually kind of go hand in hand, um, because not only has the. The district leadership team. Worked with innocent classroom and not only has the innocent classroom come in for our full day professional development in November, but. Our anti-biased, anti-racist committee, um, that we have at Burchland, which is comprised of a, a number of staff members, um. Has, uh, has brought in innocent classroom to, um. You know, to get some advice and, and to fill them in on, on what we have been doing at Burchland to, to really personalize the. The ongoing work and partnership that they are doing with us, uh, and the anti-biased, anti-racist committee. Um, meets twice a month, um, to discuss, uh, best practices, pedagogies. Uh, that, that we can implement throughout the building in order to create as inclusive. Uh, an educational experience for our students as possible. Um, and, you know, we continue to meet, uh, with our MTSS teams and the philosophies behind MTSS. Uh, help drive the, the interventions that, um, we have, um, in the building. Uh, through our tutorials and our tiered programs, um, we, we're able to look at the data. Um, we're able to look at how our students are doing and, you know, our, our driving focus is to, as much as possible, uh. Really tailor the instruction and the education for every individual child. Um, and the MTSS team, uh, helps us do that. Um, and through the, and, and, and also through the student support teams, um, tha- that we. Are, are able to meet at least once a week officially, um, but it's, it's a tight-knit team that, that meets, um. Regularly, um, we, we all keep each other updated on the goings on of our students, we're constantly brainstorming. Um, representatives of the teams meet regularly with, uh, the, the, the teachers. And the teams of teachers, our teachers are able to meet, um, by teams on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays. Um, to discuss the, the students on their team, to problem solve, to, to, to assist students that are struggling. Um, to, to bring in parents and start problem solving with the, the parents. Um, and we have our ongoing student assistant meetings, so student, uh, that is really, really struggling. We were able to, to create a more formalized, um, plan going forward with the, the parents and the stakeholders to. To really set forth a number of targeted action plans, um, and then, uh, monitor and revise. Um, as needed. Um, our clubs are back in action, um, and I'm proud to announce that we have been able to expand. Uh, our clubs, um, we had a, um, incredible sixth grade student. Um, who proposed a pride club, um, and it broke my heart at first that I could not get a. Uh, staff member to, uh, to represent the, the team. Um, but the sixth grader was persistent and would not take no as an answer, and I went back to the well and I was able to get. Um, a staff member, Senor Tay stepped up to the plate, um, and he has been working with, uh. With this student and there's about twenty kids right now in the pride club, um, and it's incredible, it's absolutely incredible. Um, and just in general at Burchen Park Middle School, um, as we have said, um, before. These three years, sixth and seventh and eighth grade can be, um. The most difficult times of a person's life, um, just by very nature of development. Um, and it's just our goal to, uh, minimize that truth as much as possible by. Just making the educational experience, um, one of fun, um, and one of engagement. Um, we just want this to be as happy a time as possible in which the students are working hard. Um, and are having a good time and all of that is based on relationships and getting to know the students as individuals. And our teachers, um, excel at that to, um, to be able to give, um, specific. Um, needs the kids and let them be seen when they come into Burchen Park Middle School.
Mr. Martin, question, um, actually, sort of as a follow-up to Mr. Thompson's question. Um, you know, you had said twenty students that have been, um, referred to or are working with, um, River Valley Counseling. With these other measures that you're talking about, are you feeling you're able to meet the needs of our students, uh, currently at Burchland?
Yeah, yes, uh, I do, um, you know, it, 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 it's not a surprise, um. That this year has been challenging, I think every educator. In America, when they entered the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, thought that the most challenging days of covid were behind them. With last year, but you know, what we started to see was that, um. There are still challenges to be had, um, and, uh, you know, students might have lost just. Some student skills that require additional effort, um, and patience, um, and modeling to get them through. But right now what we're seeing is that our students are starting to settle in, um, and engage more at the level that, that we are expecting them to. Um, part of that is just, um, acclimation of the, the school day and getting used to the, the school day. Part of it is just getting the, their needs met, um, through the, the moment-by-moment basis, um, and part of it is. Uh, the, the specific plans that we are putting place for the students that need some additional assistance, that does, yes, at times include River Valley Counseling. Um, so I would say that I'm, I'm very, very pleased with, uh, River Valley Counseling. And the fact that it has proven to be a very successful and healthy partnership for our students. Um, I'm, I'm grateful that they're able to take on as many, uh, cases as, as they have so far. Um, and, you know, if, if the needs, uh, continue, um. You know, that they'll continue to, to support and we will continue to, um, work with them to, to meet the needs of our kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, uh. For the high school in this area, um, most of our, well, pretty much all of our action steps here are, are revolving around our MTSS team. One of the, the first things that we did, and it's not necessarily the first bullet there, but. The third bullet is expand the team to include academic teachers. Uh, we really wanted to, to get teachers in the room with us and have, have those conversations to. To bring it back to that classroom level and get the teacher's perspective on things. Uh, we've offered the opportunity for, for teachers to refer students to the team and participate in that conversation as well, so that's, that's been a big benefit. Um, in terms of that first bullet, they're, uh, assessing the resources that we have and what we may need, that's been an ongoing conversation, um. I'm sure, you know, many of you are aware, it's really hard to find universal screening tools at the high school level. Particularly the social emotional piece, but the academic piece isn't easy to find either, so. Um, we've really been trying hard to, to figure out how to navigate without those tools and so. Um, we, we have. Found our toolbox is needed, needed some new tools and we maybe needed to get rid of a few old tools, and so we're working through those things. Uh, we're enhancing our after-school support programs, offering tutoring every day of the week until two thirty, um. We offer an intervention room now with, with real-time support for students. Whether that be in the, in a, in a particular class or just overall in general, uh, support across the board, so. Um, we talk about streamlining our data, so. You know, and our system is a little bit cumbersome, so, um, it's kind of hard for folks to. Fluidly collect the data that they need, so I do provide most of that for, for the team, uh, and we look at. Weekly, we look at students who are failing courses, we look at students particularly who are failing multiple courses. It does put us in a bit of a reactive nature, but that's that's the data that we have at the moment, so we look at. We focus more so on period attendance than daily attendance. There's some interesting patterns that develop there where students are missing certain classes more than others, and so we do look at those at those numbers. The the guidance department has been a a huge change for us with with two individuals focusing on ninth and tenth grade. And two individuals focused on an eleventh and twelfth. It's really streamlined a lot of the conversations that we're having when we talk about planning for certain responses to things. We're able to really pinpoint who needs to lead that charge and and, you know, whose plate that goes on and so forth, so. That's been, it's been a great step for us and. The the PSAT data has been a stab at us for for this universal screening piece, and so this is our first year. Of dabbling our toes into that water and and seeing what the PSAT data has to offer for us. We did get our first round of data back and so we'll be integrating with the Khan Academy, that's a it's an online platform that that helps us. Analyze that data a little bit and see if there's if there's some interventions that we can put into place. The other piece too that our team has taken on is really working. A lot with Heather and and the and the panorama surveys and and asserting some influence in the information that we think we need from our students to. Make the changes that are necessary for the building and so we have put that on their plates. Really looking at the questions that we're asking, the information that will will be gathered. The actions that might be taken based off of the information that we get, so. You know, we do have the some other things going on with, you know, we are in the innocent classroom trainings with our school. We we are participating in the River Valley Counseling, we're we're probably around twenty students who are active there, so. They have other things, but in terms of our action steps, we really wanted to refine that to our MTSS work.
Gary, just a quick question on Nick Cassidy, our student rep mentioned a pretty. Pretty SAT, can you tell me, tell us about that a little bit? I've never heard of that.
So that's really, that's just a fancy name for the the ninth grade version. I think eighth graders can take that as well. They they just really, it's a, one of our kids said it was very similar to an assessment that they took in middle school, actually. I think it was the star assessment, if that rings any bells with anybody. So we're not certain when we'll get that that information back in terms of the results, but. The beauty of it is it all imports into Khan Academy, which is a free resource that we get. And if we create a data, if we can create a classroom where all the kids can join and it'll give us a sense of where they stand. In in terms of their their literacy and their mathematical fluency and and their comprehension in both of those areas, so. We have yet to really get the data and dig into it, so this will be a year one for us, but. It's an exciting opportunity if we if we have an opportunity to, because it'll, we can gauge their growth then when they take it as tenth graders and eleventh graders and so. We'll really be able to see how our school has impacted their performance as they progress.
Thank you.
One more question, I I noticed on the first page, when we look at the district's markle. We're talking about district chronic absenteeism rate will continue to decrease from four percent.
We were at four percent last year.
But like, to what?
No hope is, well, we can put a number there.
Or just like.
We want it to be at three percent or two percent, yeah.
But are, so are we gonna say we've met the goal, like if we hit three percent? Because that should be, we should say that then, like decrease it by a percentage point rather than just, we're gonna decrease it, so if it's. You know, three point five or three and a half percent, like how are we measuring it relative to where we want to see it? If it's three, then it's three, but just trying to say.
Year, we were, we wanted to get below five because that's what we were worrying about accountability and we got the four. So we just wouldn't say reduce it by another percentage point down the street. The big challenge will be separating out COVID quarantine versus.
And then when we are thinking about, and I know I've mentioned this to both Gordon and Heather, like when we're thinking about this. Work, like our district's markles and how they're fitting into the broader context of the acceleration map that the state. Has put forth in terms of helping districts across the Commonwealth think about strategically. Making decisions and moves to help us close the gaps that we know have been exacerbated over the past eighteen to twenty months. Would this district's markle around supporting the whole child then align with the acceleration roadmap relative to sense of belonging? Okay, so you think that's important too, when we have all of these competing kind of documents coming together? That then we get into budget conversations, we're able to say, by meeting our district's markle of supporting the whole child. We are actually hitting the DESI target of creating a sense of belonging for students because that's part of the long term plan. DESI is hoping all districts are creating to accelerate learning, so.
That's a great point and looking at the accelerated roadmap. To that same point, it's also, you know, as we look at the federal funding we've received. DESI is recommending that you use it for many of the things that we're outlining for all of you today. You know, use it for the staffing to make sure you have the counselors in place, you know, before ESSER runs out. Use it for high quality curriculum and so as we continue to go through this presentation, you're gonna see some of. Of those measures that were taken and that's over time, so remember the ESSER grants can. Are gonna go beyond this school year, however, as we do all of this and we know that we're pretty much in budget season, you know. As we go into December, we have to see how we also wean off, so to speak, the grants. Because, you know, to, questions we often get asked in budget discussions with the town is, well, you know, what do you use grants for? This, so that's what these grants are for, is to make sure that the district and more importantly, our students and families. Are in the best possible position as those grants begin to be fully expended.
And that just ensures that we are, as a district, situating ourselves in a way to meet and be in compliance with the expectations set forth. By the state, so we are able to show alignment between the school, the district and then the state level. It just helps to make sure we're all kind of following that same. The same, you know, train of thought.
So we're meeting some of the social emotional needs, some of the counseling needs of the students, how are we doing with staff? How's staff doing through all this?
So that's a, that's a great question, I think we have to do a better job with staff. I mean, we're trying to figure out through surveys where they are, but I can't say enough about our administrators. In terms of checking in with staff and making sure that they have what they need. We also, Ms. Brown and I have been visiting schools together and so we are trying to check in with staff and. Just be open to, you know, what they may need as we continue to try to move forward. And recognize that such as December is a a pretty challenging month, but it's a little different this year because we don't have as many interruptions. But, you know, as you near the holidays, you're used to schedules being disrupted for special events and so forth. But you're also in, at the secondary level, you know, you're getting close to end of marking periods and so forth, but it's an interesting time. And people are tired. And I think Mr. Martin alluded to the fact that. You know, no one expected this year to be maybe more challenging from a staff standpoint than last year. Then last year, we asked a lot of our staff, you know, we were doing three different models throughout the school year, but they focused in on one of those models at a time. Now, we're not obviously doing the hybrid and the live streaming, but we're masked. We're, we're still trying to keep three feet, we're trying to figure that out. We have the added piece that people are speaking to around students that need more emotional support. And so we're trying to provide them, but all of that has a toll on energy of staff. And and their emotional well being, because we're all vested in this.
Yeah.
Summer wasn't long enough to be charged, no.
No, it wasn't.
Especially because we do extended school year. So there's been a lot of wraparound, but I can't say enough about staff, we 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 probably need to do more. Certainly, find ways to support.
Certainly from our level, we're 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 in it together, so, you know, from a school committee level, I know I speak for the rest of the group that. Whatever we can do, whether it be budgetary or school visits or, you know, whatever. We certainly all recognize the challenges of all of you and the staff and the leadership team, so.
No, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
We think though, Greg, to your point around the, I know it's just an informational item tonight, but the outline of the structure for our school committee goals. There might be a place there when we think about broadly community relations, being able to maybe sit in or have some. Roundtable conversations with some educators relative to where are we, where have we been, where do you think we need to go? To help inform.
Just.
Our knowledge of their experience.
Right, not only your knowledge, but the town's knowledge, if you're not doing this work. It's hard to really understand why people may be that tired or, because you're you're not. You're not used to doing the, you know, the. This is the traditional model, or not used to block, you know, you're not used to say teaching three eighty six minute blocks. But now with the added element of some of your students that didn't used to struggle are struggling. And so how do you support those students and so forth? And that's hard to, everybody's been to school, but not everybody's come back and then taught.
Right.
And so that is different.
Yeah.
Another thing is just having to adjust your practices to abide by the spacing. So, for example, the illustrative math pilot that were, has so many wonderful, rich collaborative things that. Teachers are having to adapt because they can't have kids just clustered together. So those kinds of things that we don't even think about that are adding on to. Because we've gotten away from kids in rows for so many years and now all of a sudden we have to, oh yeah, how do we do this again?
And talking in a mask, like talk, reading a book to a kid in a mask.
Teaching phonemic awareness to kids in a mask.
And yet they're doing it.
Yes, they are.
We saw it last week, it's really amazing to to watch our staff in action. Teaching phonemic awareness in a mask, it was unbelievable.
These are all the challenges we have to let others know about.
Yeah.
Good.
This next goal is in terms of accelerated roadmap aligned to strong.
Thank you, Heather.
So this is around, I would say instructional practice and so this is where. Hopefully, our professional development and some of the work that we're already doing comes together. So that these best practices can be not only utilized in the classroom, but also shared as they plan in collaborative time. And say, okay, what do we think is going to be the best way to move forward in providing. More support in some cases, so at the end of the year, what we hope to see is. That we're able to create a scope and sequence with proficiency scales for our K to five math in the LA. We're working, and this is, I think, Ms. Brown, is based off the work you've done with the report card committees, but we're looking at. Continuing to revise our standard based report card at the elementary and so with that work, create some, a grading handbook. For K to five math in the LA, in order to make that better understood by all involved.
By all stakeholders.
Yeah.
So the the curriculum process that DESI has introduced, I love because it's really slowed down the process. And they have phases and the first phase is learn and prepare. It's all built in professional development and their idea is teachers need to really be critical. Curriculum literate in order to choose high quality evidence based materials. And so it ties really nicely into some of the things that the report card committee was doing, and when we were really kind of unpacking standards of. How they could be learning targets and how do we really know kids measure to the. Literacy work that DESI is asking us to kind of switch to more systematic instruction. And to our our math pilot and our and our investigation into other math curriculum at the elementary. So all of these things work really nicely together in terms of the DESI process. And then in terms of the high school, we'll have some release days for the English department to really solidify and. Revised their curriculum and the history and social studies, the history department at the high school already started this work last summer. And then the science department at Bertrand Park, of course, you know, got that open ed science grant, so. They're they're shifting around their spoken sequence to align to to the open and science. Recommended scope and sequence with some tweaks because they do allow for some flexibility. So there's a lot going on despite all of the, you know, things that we were just talking about.
And these are all communities needing, you know, in addition to prepping for their own.
Right.
Teaching and learning, so we do have to, that's a great question, we do have to not only. Continue to think how we support our staff, but also just commend them and just. Thank them for the incredible work that they have been doing.
Curriculum guides.
Sure.
Will those be ready to use at the beginning of next year?
That's the hope.
That's our goal, yeah.
Okay. Because I know that you guys had talked about it last year.
History is 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 really getting there, I mean, during the summer, they were really close. To making sure everything is aligned with the two thousand eighteen and making them more user friendly so folks can use them across. And then English, we're starting those release days in January, so I think we can at least get ninth and fifth.
Right. You had some English teachers this summer.
Yes, we, yeah.
Yeah, I remember, you guys have said that they've been working on it since over the summer.
So that was more the learn and prepare, getting people to understand the why and and the shift, right? And so like shifting our instruction in English to teaching the book, to teaching the standards.
Yeah.
So it's kind of like a lot of the pre work now, ready to dig in, do it.
And you said by in January, they want to.
The release days.
January, we'll start release days with with English department.
Wow, all right, that's great.
So relative to those end of year benchmarks, how does that align to the percentage that we have inside of the goal? So when we talk about.
Continuous learning, you mean?
No, when we're saying that those benchmarks, like listening to what Heather just described and following up on Nancy's question, if some of these documents. Aren't, are the actual benchmarks for the end of the year, how does that push us towards one hundred percent of our staff? Providing that standards based experience if the documents that they might need to do so won't be ready till the end of the academic year.
So part of that work is getting people prepared, so the, you know, my hope is, and I'm trying to also slow down and. So my my person at DESI that I work with also is like, sometimes you can't go as fast as you want to. But you're right, all the work that we need to do, we also have to create the PD to then bring everyone else, right?
They, but they have curriculum guides now, they just need to be updated and we also have to start thinking about things differently. As as Ron just talked about, which was part of that learn and prepare and going on in terms of teaching more of the standard. Than teaching the book, that's a great.
For English and social studies, it's pretty much the whole department, so they're involved in the whole, so there, that PD is. Is already part of the process for the elementary, obviously it won't be everyone, so we do need to plan more.
And is that reflective, like is that, is that like an administrator goal, like in terms of thinking about? Are administrators providing feedback on specific indicators within DESI's teacher rubric? Are we asking them to focus relative to this goal on professional?
So all teachers are are focusing on indicators in their plans. And certainly, you know, the, this is pretty wide open, so it's gonna fall within, we connect to almost all of that.
I think too, before we focus on instruction, we do need to make sure that we have a high quality curriculum that people are following. So that's part of the plan, but this, the piece that we're really focusing on is really making sure that we have the high quality curriculum.
And that won't be solidified until next academic year. Not that January, starting.
January is when the release dates are starting.
It's the beginning of the year.
They've done some of the the prep work and January is when we're actually, we have scheduled, we started to schedule release stage for the English department. Social studies is further along.
And the K to five work will be after school committee work because we can't pull that many people. We can't even pull the whole English or history department right now because of staff. But the K to five definitely has to be a committee work.
But like anything else, these are in cycles, I mean, if you go back, we have curriculum maps for all the departments, but we need to do a better job. In terms of revising them as standards change and really living them, making those living documents. And so I think that's what you're getting at, but they're not operating out there with no curriculum.
No, agreed, I just trying to figure out then how we say, like if we're setting a metric, like if we're saying a hundred percent of our class. No, agreed. I just trying to figure out then how we say, like if we're setting a metric, like if we're saying a hundred percent of our classrooms are going to be doing X, Y, and Z, but we're also acknowledging at the bottom, we haven't necessarily provided all the tools to do so.
Well, I think it's ongoing, so you're you're providing better tools. It's not as though they're not following the standards now. Um, and that we're highlighting two specific areas that really, um, in English and social studies, actually three, with science, uh, middle school. Um, those are areas that have to move quicker. Um, because they have had standards, well, in social studies, you have the civics project that um needed to get off the ground, and standards have been revised. So it's part of ongoing work. Um, and so these are benchmarks that we're sort of highlighting that work. Uh, but that's, it's ongoing, like in any school system. Um, we have curriculum guides, we need to continue to advise them and make sure that they're up to date. So, but two, I think the other question you had, you know, as you do learning walks, whether it be Ms. Brown and me or principals. Um, yeah, that's what they're looking for. I mean, are are you teaching, you know, the standards of the state of Massachusetts? Um, you know, not just teaching whatever you'd like to teach. And you know, I think, so that's where that, the top priority comes from.
And then should there be an indicator then saying that, like, there's going to be, I'm making this up, twelve district-wide learning walks that are conducted by the director of curriculum and instruction, and that is going to be evidence to point at a hundred percent of our teachers are providing standards-based instruction. Cause I don't, these are documents.
Yeah.
And they're committees, but they're not necessarily providing a data point to speak to whether or not in classrooms, we're seeing
Sure.
Evidence of those documents coming.
So I mean, we certainly can add that, you know, as a, as another.
So measurable benchmark, you're looking for something to achieve.
Cause if we have that specific number there, that percentage, if we're saying
Learning walks and so forth.
That could be it, okay, unannounced observations, it could be.
I mean, I know that the principals are obviously doing more. Um, we've probably done three or four already together. Ms. Brown has done um some learning walks on her own, as as have I. Um, we can start to capture that. Or at least say we're gonna do twelve together.
I just made that up.
Yeah, I'm just looking for how do we show that that we're meeting the district goal.
Yeah.
Versus the 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 bullets at the bottom are things we're working on, but aren't necessarily going to be done till the end of the year. So we're not actually gonna do them until we start them.
I think it's also, you know, there's, these are all tied together for changing our progress, right? We need to be looking at the instruction. Um, but I, at the same time, providing folks with the tools to uh teach what they need to teach.
Well, and and maybe maybe it's a smart goal that's the issue, maybe a hundred percent of the ELP teachers will provide standard-based. Maybe you shouldn't say that, maybe you should say they think the district will continue to work on improving standard-based learning, like percentual learning. I don't know.
Yeah, I just think one or the other has to kind of give.
Then your benchmarks are relative to the goal.
Mm-hmm.
Because if you're continually working on those things, which is what you're saying we're doing, then then that's the goal.
Right.
So maybe that needs to be spaced a little bit.
Well, we're always focused on instruction, the focus is more on the curriculum, so that when it's, I feel like it's
And so it's currently the learning.
Look at the instruction when people have the materials that they.
Right.
Is the learning experience currently rooted in universal design for learning culturally sustainable pedagogy in order for all the institutions that actually is happening now?
This is what we want to make sure that everyone has access to be able to teach.
That's coming from the professional development and all the following.
But it's instruction and it's the curriculum.
Right. I think it's just that first, a hundred percent of teachers will provide. I think that's the, that's the, that's the saying.
Yeah, I think we either need to
Cause it's gonna happen in the future, but not until those benchmarks are met.
Or we need a benchmark that indicates that, you know, um, twelve learning walks that are conducted. You know, seventy-five percent of them are gonna show.
But I don't, I think, I think the benchmarks are right.
Yeah.
I think the standards need some tweaking, maybe, is that?
So ELPS will continue to um work to provide, is that what you're saying?
Right, and then the benchmarks are relative to that, cause these are the things we're gonna do to work towards.
Yes, and then I think once we have them in place, then we can put an indicator such as
For next year, I will be instructional.
Yeah.
Because it's gotta be one or the other.
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense. So ELPS will continue to work to provide standard-based twenty-first century learning experiences, and then go through, and there are some of the benchmarks that will come out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, we already talked about quite a bit. Action step number one.
Just if you wanna pop that just back, just quickly. Um, so we've talked about a lot of these things, the report card committee, the early literacy, working with Desi, that's the professional development there, giving us illustrative math pilots. Um, and then obviously collecting artifacts, uh, which I think is the point here, which is truly, uh, so just wanted to highlight those. Moving into action step two. Um, this is obviously around the professional development we were just talking about, Mr. Thompson. And um making sure that these things are scheduled and happening throughout the year. Whether they be release days, as we were talking about in January, or um some of the the professional development is already happening on the November full professional development day. And then we buildings use um the half-days to hone that in more. You wanna speak to the number three in terms of the personalized learning?
Sure, and and number two, that um coming up on the twenty-sixth, we have um the three to five schools will have both a half-day of universal design training. Um, they already had universal design one-on-one with Katie Novak a few years ago, so this will be more specific, specifically um how do we utilize the framework to really meet the needs of all kids considering the variability that we always have, but that is even more um obvious that, you know, because of the effects of the pandemic. And then uh half the day we'll be looking at, um, ST math has a lot of new features where you can really dig into their data more easily and um utilize that data both for your group instruction, but also for small groups, so that will be that. The high school in Burchland Park will continue to work with innocent classrooms, and Meadowbrook will continue letters training. Which is uh basically um helping them to understand how to learn how to read. So it's not for a specific program as much as helping to get the tools to improve instruction um for the early.
And that's happening on January twenty-sixth, which is our, on our second full professional development day.
So to that end, when you go back to those end-of-year benchmarks, and we're talking about scope and sequence with proficiency scales and really trying to kind of create a funnel, so to speak, so that we know we have all of these items right now. We have a very large menu across our schools. I mean, just even here, we have Lexia, Albert I O, I Ready, S T Math, you have, we have Math Recovery, we have illustrative math. We have a host of resources that are available to educators. Do you anticipate, Heather, that when we think about that scope and sequence, in particular for K to five, that by the time we report back at the end of the year, we'll be moving forward in those selection processes so that students are no longer, and educators maybe are no longer in some ways, trying to figure out um on their own, is this kid a candidate for prodigy versus I Ready Math versus S T Math versus A V M R or Math Recovery? So that we're able to kind of say, if we look at panorama data, this is a tier-one child, these are the offerings that should be available. This is a tier-two child, these are the offerings that should be available. So we're creating alignment for educators rather than kind of a
Pottery.
A potpourri or like a hunt and pack, like I, I don't know what, so I'm gonna grab a little bit of everything.
Yes, utilizing usage and growth data to help make those decisions.
Okay, and that would be one of those pieces that when we look at the scope and sequence, it would align potentially to resources that have now been selected for a purpose and a selected group of students.
And in our elementary principals.
Okay, for um the uh action steps that are connected between the three elementary schools, we have heard about illustrative math curriculum that were in the first year of a pilot. So this provides teachers with um sequenced materials that we spoke about based on standards and research-based learning. To support students learning in these early years in Meadowbrook School. Um, it also is being piloted to determine that it is rigorous, problem-based, and fully aligned to the standards with coherence uh within each grade level, and then across grade levels moving into um grades three, four, and five. Um, the next component was a, or is a um building fact fluency um program in practice that students that can engage in with teachers. Um, we did this to sort of say, well, if illustrative math is a problem-based curriculum, a lot of times with elementary students, what hangs up problem-solving is their um fluency with their facts. So for years, you know, students may have memorized facts in school or at home, but it doesn't always transfer it to fluency. So when problem-solving, um, when when uh facts hang them up in their problem-solving um and make errors, this program helps to uh have students learn their math facts by developing deep conceptual understandings and procedural fluency at the same time as accuracy. Um, this comprehensive tool provides everything a teacher needs to help students develop number sense on the way to fluency from cards to games and videos and online resources. Um, and we sort of wanted to do this so we could continue to go forward in the curriculum without slowing down the pace and the rigor of the classroom, but building the fluency along the way with facts. Um, we also have A V M R, we, the Advantage Math Recovery, we began training um in our district uh about two years ago in this um program. Uh, it has a series of courses, a course one, a course two, and a course three. Um, course one offers whole number topics such as number words and numerals, structuring numbers, addition and subtraction. Um, and these are topics that affect the development of future mathematical understanding. Um, the topics and domains covered often appear later as holes and gaps in upper elementary students. Um, so we'd like to build that foundation early. Um, course two expands and deepens knowledge and understanding of the mathematical development for all students by implementing diagnostic assessments um for A V M R, for multiplication and division, and place value understanding. And so then course three is similar to course two, but that is for um fractions. And this can be used as both an instructional tool and also an intervention. Um, and then we mentioned S T Math a a whole lot. This is, uh, we now have scheduled minimum requirements for sixty to ninety minutes in our schools per week. Um, this is for problem-based learning that is personalized for the student's level and rate of success. S T Math also offers two half-days of professional develop development that's tailored for the needs of the school. Um, and teachers also use this as a teaching tool for data analysis and instruction accompanied by the visualization and process of problem-solving with mati- mathematics to understand complex concepts within a challenging visual curriculum. So having S T Math as a extension to the core curriculum and then having um A V M R as a intervention component, and then having fact fluency as a building block for problem-solving in our in in a new curriculum pilot, we feel like we can build some coherence within the grade and then along uh across the grades as we go forward in this. Um, and it's all math-heavy because that's what the data is telling us.
Thank you. No problem. Moving into the the secondary schools.
Yeah, I'm taking this one for Burchland Park. Can everybody hear me?
Hang on. Yeah, we can hear you.
Alright, good, great. So, yeah, to what? Thank you. Um, to what Connor said, I just wanna thank everybody, uh, leadership team, uh, school committee, Connor, Steve, the entire community. Uh, the love and support I felt from the Burchland community just was part of what saved me, so I'll never forget it. Um, every, every day I've been back has been awesome. The kids have just been phenomenal, uh, as well as the staff, so I'm a really lucky guy. Part of that is working with all of you, so thank you so much. Um, I really appreciate it. So our action steps at Burchland Park, um, one big one for us has been targeted tutorial. We now have three days a week that we have targeted tutorial, which has significantly expanded the number of students we get to put into intervene interventions. Um, as you've all known for a while, intervene, most of our tiered classes have been offered in when kids are in specials. But doing targeted tutorials, which for anyone in education is kind of like a win block, what I need block. Um, allows us to really give many more kids interventions. Um, so we sort of break it into three things. You could be in enrichment, you could be in sort of practice, or you could be in interventions. So that, that's been a a really good tool for us to get more kids in the middle school level, exactly what they need. Um, you know, along with that, of course, we've been using I Ready more and more. We have S T Math, Lexia, Common Lit, New Zella. Um, so there's a lot of different tools that um our teachers are using to make sure we're meeting kids where they are and giving them the kind of tools they need to take next steps. As Ms. Brown mentioned, in sci- curriculum and science is very exciting. We're in year one of Open Sci Ed. I've only been back a few weeks, but I've seen some pretty cool uh experiments and labs already taking place that are new to us because of this great curriculum, and the training is very in-depth um to prepare teachers to to implement these lessons. So it is a phased-in change, uh, but so far, so good. Our math department last year did not do standards-based grading just because of everything that was going on. We had to simplify some things. But I'm very proud to say they went right back to standards-based grading this year. That really, of all the change levers, to get us focused on standards in the math classroom. And and not just being focused on standards, but teaching standards, assessing standards, reteaching standards, assessing standards. Our 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 standards-based report cards in math are a great tool, and they've really helped focus us. And they're actually like, when kids get their paper report cards, they get one report card, and they, then they get a whole second report card that is just math. Um, which is good. Our E L A department is in year two of a a bit of a standards um and text review dive. A lot of our different grade levels are have implemented new texts, but the goal is for them to implement the text, much like Ms. Brown said, while focusing on teaching the standards and not teaching the text. And then in sixth and seventh grade history, we use T C I History Alive. While in eighth grade, we're continuing to refine our civics curriculum, which as we know, civics M-CAS is coming. And thankfully, we've been teaching civics for a while, so certainly that made this a better and easier transition for us than for others, I'm sure. So those are the biggest action steps we're taking at Burchland to make sure curriculum and instruction are where they need to be. Um, we're really, really proud of, you know, people have touched on it, but this, this is a challenging year. I've only been back a few weeks, but I've seen it. Um, we're dealing with more student issues than I've ever seen. Um, since I got to Burchland, this is my ninth year at Burchland. Um, it's kind of non-stop with different things. Um, and that's tiring, uh, especially on teachers. But all the teachers are pushing through and focusing on taking next steps in their curriculum and instruction. That makes me very proud, and that also makes Burchland an awesome place to be.
Questions? No, okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I think Mr. Page might be presenting next.
Uh, so good evening, good evening, everyone. Um, so just talk a little bit about what's been going on at the high school. So I know Ms. Brown um already talked a little bit about what we're doing in the English and history departments, but just kind of hit on what's happening there. The social studies curriculum revision that she was speaking of earlier, uh, the big focus there is in the U S one um classes where uh the department is working really hard to effectively implement the um, the civics project into that curriculum, uh, and make sure, uh, you know, it it aligns to those standards and and does fit neatly into that. And and I know Ms. Trilio spoke earlier about how um she was even able to participate uh actively in um, you know, that implementation happening with with Mr. Lee, Ms. Ritter, uh, Mr. Polk, and they're, they're doing an awesome job in terms of that um, revision implementation of of that curriculum. Uh, Ms. Pauls has also been really involved as well, Ms. Bruger, so it's, it's been a whole team effort in the department. Um, if you're looking at uh what's happening in the English department, uh, the revisions that they're looking at there, um, some of it has to do with some uh vertical alignment between the uh the ninth and tenth grade teachers and what's happening in the eighth grade over at Burchland. You know, so there's conversations uh taking place, uh, taking place there, and we're also going to potentially be looking at um, our our upper-level uh English classes as well in eleven and twelve. Um, uh, you know, if things play out the way we we would like to see them uh work out this year. Uh, but if we're talking big picture, um, just at the high school, uh, just aligned to that goal of a focus on uh universal design for learning and culturally responsive teaching, uh, right now we are looking at, um, you know, creating a strategic plan at the high school for the next three years. Uh, where we um, we're, we're working to make sure that we have a, an outline of what um the implementation of The implementation of uh U D L and cultural responsive teaching looks like in our classes. Uh, and how we progress towards that uh, uh, both this year, the next year, and then the following year as well. Um, so far this year, we've had um one and a half days of professional development. Uh, that first full day of P D, uh, we had a combination of uh time working with innocent classroom at the discipline uh district level. Uh, we also did take some time to review the um. The equity audit that wa- that was done by Clea uh with our full staff and have them break that down to understand the why we're digging into things like uh the innocent classroom professional development. Uh, but then we also did have uh half of that day devoted to some U D L work as well as uh some U D L work. Um, on the October half day as well. So um, we spent a lot of time talking about. Um, both of these topics when it comes to our professional development here uh at E L H S, and a lot of this work is being driven by both our professional development committee. Um, which uh has uh representatives of Anne Blaine, Carol Ford, and Carolyn Ritter, who's done an awesome job. Uh, so far helping implement the U D L uh professional development and then um the equity and diversity work um being uh led by. Millie Tank Ready, Ashley Pauls, Eddie Polk, and Jim Faulkner. I I couldn't have done any of the work that I've done this year without them, so I just wanted to give them a quick shout out as well.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I have a question. Um, wanna see, and your benchmarks is the L curriculum revised in line with twenty twenty W E D A standards. But I don't see any of the action steps that went with that. So how are we? How are we seeing that's being used or it's?
So, and I know Ms. Brown can speak to that more specifically, but um.
Or if there's been changes or?
So that you have a relatively small department with um E L L. Ms. Brown's been meeting with our three teachers and. Um, starting to work on that. Um, and she can give you an update in terms of what they've done to date.
So, obviously, the twenty twenty W E D A standards are new, so it's just kind of giving them time to really get into that. One of the things that we're working on is going through the same process that Desi has for curriculum renewal and um, sorry, curriculum in adapt. Adoption. I'm losing my words. It's getting late. Um, so this is the learn and prepare, and uh we are. It's challenging because we are looking for a curriculum. But as you know, with E L, you have kids all over the place, so to have this kind of straightforward scope and sequence. A lot of the materials that are out there that even meet W E D A prime. Qual qualifications are just kind of out of the box programs. They don't really work. So we're really trying to figure out what would work best for our E Ls and how can we maximize. Uh, all staff and really empower all staff to work together so that the E L teachers don't feel like this, they're their kids, right? So how, so we are looking at a couple of different programs, not that the programs can solve all of our problems. I really want them to kind of own this too. Um, but there are a few programs out there that are really designed for um kind of individualizing uh students' needs based on um. You know, access scores and W E D A, but also having a way to uh communicate that with all of their teachers. So that that those language goals can go throughout their day and not just, you know, with the E L teacher. And we are trying to switch our language to multilingual learners too. Just an acid-based term. So I don't know if I really answered your question, but the idea is we don't really have a a a solid curriculum at this point. And so when we got audited by Desi, that was the, everything else was great, but they're they're saying you need this. And it's funny, as we go to the meetings, we are not alone. Um, and a lot of districts like Worcester have created. Um, they have twenty people in their department. You know, they've created their own scope and sequence. And this, our department's thinking, how are we gonna do that? It's just three of us. I really think Des is gonna catch up and provide some more resources for folks as well. Um, but that's the goal, that we have a more um solid foundation for the E L kids. That's based on high quality evidence-based.
Okay, you bring this uh. Tears learning achievement where we're.
Monitoring. So thank you.
Yeah.
You're right.
Thank you. Go ahead, take it away.
No, no.
Um, we're teachers who collaborate and use formative assessment data uh to support students achieving high standard of academic performance and growth. And so a lot of this is around um using our collaborative time and understanding and. Be able to walk you through some of the professional development that we did with research for better teaching. But if we do this throughout the year, the hope is we're seeing the student growth that uh we're targeting. Um, M C A S uh always has talked about typical growth range being in that forty to sixty percent range. So we want to see our students, you know, in the aggregate on the district level in that range. Um, but we also want to use tools um such as iReady and see not only um students hitting typical growth. But also twenty to thirty percent, which is that final bullet, hitting that stretch growth, which is beyond. Um, you know, what their typical growth might be, where they're really starting to. Move forward and make incredible progress in one year. More that you can add to that?
Right, so um, if I am a student and I am not functioning at grade level and I make annual growth, that's great, but that doesn't mean I'm gonna catch up with my peers. So the idea is to try to hit those stretch growth goals as well. And the idea is that when we, if we have time to collaborate together and look at data regularly. Specifically, not, you know, already dated, but also the formative assessment data from our classes. We can start to see where kids are struggling, what we need to do in terms of next steps. Do we need to regroup, reteach? Do kids need to, you know, need enrichment? Um, and so the goal is that ultimately, um, all of the uh elementary schools will have a what I need block. So that we can meet these different needs, not just in the classroom, but also um in a dedicated block for intervention and enrichment.
Would we, would using on the P S A T and S A T data for this, would that be useful too?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I know that the high school is gonna be using it.
Right.
Um, as another data point. So I don't know if that's anything we would add here or?
Oh, add, yeah.
You certainly could add it, absolutely.
Um.
The problem is we're doing, the only reason why we didn't put it, it's because we don't, we won't have growth this year. We'll start to see growth after the year. Um, but they are, as you heard earlier, using that, you know, not just the council students, but to create this personalized path to thought academy. And it's a relatively new, um, it is new this year, so it's a study, but we're still figuring out, yeah.
Are the percentages what they are in terms of typical growth, forty to sixty percent of students? And then you mentioned stretch growth to get, that's getting them all the way caught up. Twenty to thirty percent of the students, so does that mean twenty to thirty percent that? Need to make the stretch growth, we're only looking for twenty to thirty percent of them to make?
Ultimately, one hundred percent of the kids, right?
Um, but we're also building on our recent data.
Yeah, previous.
So historically, forty to sixty in the typical growth view?
That that's actually stretching it to higher, that we haven't seen, yeah. We we haven't seen um forty to sixty consistently making.
In just typical growth, because that seems like a a term.
Well, we started using the iReady across the district in two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
So it's hard to get historical data that, yeah.
Yep, okay.
But I I think with the stretch growth, if I'm not incorrect, we almost doubled what we said in terms of this goal, so that's gonna be a hard goal to read. Um, it's it's not what we saw last year.
Yeah, I mean, that's a term that I haven't even heard before, so it's.
It's relatively new, but we wanted people to, um, you know, as you go into the action steps. And we start talking about in that second action step, the complaining time, we want them to use this data. So that they can start to plan for and use these tools to the best of their ability, but also support students in the best way possible.
Correct. And also this back to why it's so important for us to have that high-quality evidence-based curriculum, because that has shown to really help kids grow quickly. Um, and so all of these things obviously tie together.
Relative to that, we, the goal itself talks about academic performance and growth. So then when we think about academic performance, should we have a benchmark too? That is speaking to the number of students falling within each of the four categories on M C A S. I mean, right now we are not necessarily when we look at three to eight E L A or mathematics. Or science for that matter. When we look together, meeting or exceeding expectations, we are. We are kind of either just above the state or below the state, so. If we're going to see growth and monitor growth, which is part of this, then should we also have an indicator relative to performance on M C A S?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Whether it's to meet or exceed the state percentages or something to that effect.
I mean, I would actually go, um, I'd like to think that we will. Be above the state averages, but um maybe we should look at what percentages, what kind of increase we're gonna see in meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. Maybe that's where we put a benchmark for the district. We can certainly put that in. Go on.
We want to move into elementary. Any questions, Bill?
You wanna, I know you touched on the R B T, but did you want to just give a quick uh overview?
So yeah, all the, all the department, most, majority of the department heads receive training and um research for better teaching. They have a a professional development called coaching high-impact teams, and really what it's all about is helping. Uh, leaders to um facilitate teams, so create those spaces where people can look at data without. You know, getting anxious or feeling defensive and um. Being able to utilize that data in order to drive instruction. So like I was saying, they have something called firm action. And so that could mean that I'm re, you know, giving feedback or figuring out. Maybe I might need to figure out a little bit more why this is happening in terms of the data, or I need to reteach or regroup, so. It's really about um giving them a toolbox of tools to help with this. Um, and we're gonna need to keep revisiting it because it is relatively new and our collaborative time is not necessarily um. You know, enough at this point, but again, we only have so much time in the day.
So this was um adding for the first time at the elementary level, adding collaborative planning time within their week. Um, and we've been working with a district management group, uh, looking at a number of different scheduling models to try to make that happen. Pandemic uh sort of shut down that work for a brief period of time, and then we've gotten back at it, but um. This year is the first time our elementary teachers have been participating in that um. And across the board, after the elementary schools. Um, there'd been some, I think Maple Shade had some, some um. Elements of it in previous years, but this year really was the push to see that in all three elementary schools.
We also wanted to make sure that we're defining what that means for you too. It's not just another team meeting.
And now we invite our elementary principals in. I think it might be Ms. Lordy, she is. Evening.
Okay, is that me?
I think we have uh Ms. Lordy, yep. It's not Ms. Lordy.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so hi, um, everyone, I'm Lauren Shea. And I am the assistant principal at Meadowbrook, and it is nice to see everybody and um and meet you. Um, so we, um, Meadowbrook has this third slide for the elementary schools. And as you can see, this slide outlines the key action steps that are common amongst all three elementary schools. In support of the continuous learning and achievement goal. One of the actions that all three of the schools have in common is the establishment of school-based M T S S teams. And as you know, that stands for multi-tiered systems of support. Um, just to review, it is a process that facilitates educational decision-making. Focusing on student growth while considering the whole child, so this includes their academic and social emotional needs. And um throughout the year last year, our school-based teams worked with Clea. And based on this work, Meadowbrook's team developed a common vision for our work and created a blueprint that outlines how the M T S S process. Relates to structures already in place, such as ACT and R T I. Um, we view the M T S S as the overarching umbrella. Um, our teams are all relatively new and are settling into the work with the ultimate goal of reviewing student data. Identifying students needing intervention and mon- monitoring progress in these interventions.
And the next two bullets really kind of go hand in hand, so I'm just gonna wrap them together. You've heard a bit about this already from what uh Gordon and Heather were both sharing, but all three of the elementary schools were tasked. To add common planning time and an intervention block into their schedule this year. Um, this was no small task, especially at Meadowbrook where we have eight to ten glass classes at a grade level. Um, so it took some doing, but we did make it happen. And common planning time has now been established at all three elementary schools. During this time, teachers meet in grade-level teams, or in our case, um, because we can't cover ten teachers all at once. They meet as half of a grade-level team to examine data, to share information, resources, ideas, and expertise. And use that in order to create a more accessible and effective learning experience for students. This work that they do during common planning time then sort of feeds the work that's done in the intervention and enrichment block. Basically, they take the common planning time and use that as a time to look at data. And plan for what they're going to reteach or enrich during enrichment. During the intervention block, um, some students may be pulled out for tier two and tier three intervention. Um, as part of the R T I or special education processes. While others remain in the classroom, where teachers can then use flexible grouping in order to reteach or extend learning. Um, at Meadowbrook, we've been easing into this process uh slowly since the start of the school year. And that easing in was done very intentionally in order to make this change more manageable and sustainable for our teachers. Um, as you know, some of you that have uh worked and taught at the elementary level, every little change that's made. Um, affects every single teacher. Uh, we teach everything, so it's a lot of um changes for them on their plate all at once. So in order to do it in a manageable way, we've eased into it. Currently, teachers are intervening and extending learning within their own classroom. However, our ultimate goal for this block is that. We're gonna use this time to work across classrooms, regrouping students um based on need across rooms. In order to better meet everyone's needs. And I will turn it back over to Gordon and Heather. Oh, actually, no, sorry. I'll toss the ball over to person.
Thank you, Miss.
Okay, that's me, isn't it?
Yeah, Mr. Pearson.
All right, we save the uh last Burchland Backstreet Boy for the end here. It's an honor to be addressing such an august company. But recognizing the late hour, I will do my best to illuminate this very briefly. So connected action steps that we're doing at Burchland. Um, solidifying the culture of formative assessments. This is a a huge piece of what we're doing, all related to the FAR cycle um from the R B T. Trying to use iReady mastery checks and iReady growth tracks to get a little bit more formative assessment to. Uh, push our instruction the way it needs to go to meet the needs of the kids. We started this a couple of years ago, and I'm proud to say like iReady mastery checks are now a more routine. Part of our E L A and math instruction coming at the end of each unit, in addition to teacher design. Um, assessments to see exactly where the kids are at. Uh, the iReady mastery checks are fantastic because they are very heavily M C A S aligned. And not just with the standards, but with the presentation, right down to the tech-enhanced type questions to get our kids used to seeing those. So we can see how they'll perform on those, gives a good idea going forward. Um, with our instruction, so we see not only what are they doing with the standard, but how do they handle those kinds of questions that they usually only see on M C A S? And the iReady growth checks are a great tool. We give the diagnostic three times a year. Uh, but we can do the growth checks in between. It's a much quicker way to check on student progress, which is very handy for our inclusion liaisons. And also for our interventionists between the third and fourth quarters to identify progress. And see kids who might need an intervention at a time of the year when we don't have a diagnostic to draw on for data. Uh, we have weekly collaboration stations and counter-type counterpart times. Uh, we're fortunate. At the middle school level to have a lot of this already built into our schedule. So when we're using the uh planning on those targeted tutorials that Tim was talking about earlier. Um, to do that with the amount of efficacy that we want, yeah, requires a great deal of planning. So having those weekly collaboration station counterpart times to sit down with our colleagues, a grade level, our departments, our department chairs, our coaches. And share the best practices that we're using. Look at the student work, look at all the different sources that we data we have, go through that cycle of thinking, what do we need to change and to reassess? We have all that time built into our schedule so that we can do that to the best of our ability. Um, the department heads have been trained in R B T, again, it's going back to that FAR cycle, the formative assess- Um, the department heads have been trained in RBT, again, it's going back to that FAR cycle, the formative assessment for results. Um, not just department heads, but um, our coaches, literacy coach and math coach have been trained, anybody else who wanted to do it, so they can be resources. During those collaboration station and counterpart times to help us plan around those targeted tutorials. Uh, reading department being trained in Just Words, a few years back. We noticed that we have a lot more kids with phonological needs uh, in our reading intervention programs. Uh, kids coming up with goals written specific to Wilson programs. So with the help of Dr. Wells, we designed and implemented a tier three program that we did not have before and. Lately, we've been able to expand the number of staff that are trained in Just Words, which is the Wilson component we're using to meet the needs of those kids. So it gives us a little more flexibility in how we can get those kids what they need as far as reading interventions go. Um, iReady is another big part of of what we're doing to get the kids what they need. Cause the iReady instruction allows us to give kids tailored instruction to their specific needs, uh, skill deficits. So it's only as effective as the fidelity that the kids engage with it, it's a magnificent tool. We don't want to see kids just going through the motion, but giving us their best effort so that we're getting accurate data. So we've always tried to find ways to increase student motivation and our iReady incentive program has been something we instituted recently that's showing great promise. Uh, rewarding kids for their effort and passing lessons in iReady. And they can uh, get raffle tickets to earn prizes and we had had our first drawing on Friday, it's a lot of excitement in school around that. And it seems to be doing the job of increasing student motivation, so we're very excited to see how that continues to grow. Uh, we do have weekly iReady time worked into our schedule for our kids, we have two days a week, uh, sometimes three. Occasional Wednesday thrown in there where kids can work on their My Path iReady instruction. I know the sweet spots between thirty and forty-five minutes of iReady time in both reading and in math. And it's not always easy to get the kids to to get that done at home, so having time built into the schedule where they can do that under the supervision of teachers. Is a real boon to us in making sure the kids are engaging in that and addressing their skill deficits. And so those are some of the connected action steps that we're doing at Burchland Park.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Questions? Moving into ELHS action steps.
Okay, so to to bring this home, um. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about what we're, what we're doing at the high school when it comes to looking at some of the formative data across all the different departments. And and I will say we do take and we are taking um. Uh, individual department approaches when it looks, takes out, uh, when we're looking at um, some of the data that we're getting from our students. A big part of our focus at the high school is what we're doing in our math, science, our English courses, uh, just cause obviously that's the data that's most relevant when it comes to MCAS testing. Um, so in the science department, um, just to help us with our open response questions when it comes to biology tests, there, there's a big focus. Also with just our lab writing and our lab reports on uh, on our CER approach, we're looking at the claim evidence and. Uh, reasoning of the students when it comes to the uh, the writing of their short answer, um, open and their open response questions, uh, when they're doing that lab writing. Um, and we are scoring those kids on, on a common rubric in the uh, in all the different science classes. Um, just so we have that common language that we're, we're using when we talk about. Um, you know, what the student data is and what they're seeing in their classes. Uh, in the math and English departments, we're, we're trying something a little bit different this year, we talked a little bit about how we're uh, hoping to use Khan Academy to maybe. Um, give us some intervention data uh, through some of the PSAT scores, but our hope is to also. Um, use Khan Academy as a tool that can also get us some standards-based. Um, uh, formative data in our math and English courses as well, so. Um, we're piloting that a little bit and uh, hoping that we can start using that as a tool for both, both of those courses to uh, you know. Uh, guide our curriculum, um, and prepare those kids uh, uh, for the MCAS this spring. So I'm not gonna talk too much, I know it's been a long night, I'm, I'm gonna wrap up there, but um. Again, the, the overall picture for this one is we are taking departmental approaches when it comes to the form of data.
Do high school teachers have common planning time or PLCs or?
Uh, we, we do not have common planning time, we do have the uh, the five uh, collaborative days. Um, and we obviously have department time um, once a month, but we, we don't have collaborative planning time during the school day.
That brings us to full circle, all three goals working in conjunction uh, with each other. I don't know if there are final questions, while we still have the entire leadership team here. Uh, certainly we'll make the revisions that we talked about this evening and um. Set, I can bring it back for review or um.
I think we, we offered up enough revisions that it warrants us taking one more look at it. Especially because we changed some language relative to the actual goals and then the district level benchmark, so. I think it would probably be better if we looked at it one more time, like for that purpose.
I don't, I don't know if we'll need the.
And I think if we can add, sorry, Greg, the, those pieces in, connected to the accelerated roadmap underneath. Then that, again, I think just helps us kind of all be on the same trajectory as we think about a long-term plan. Not only relative to data, but relative to budget and prioritization of. District funds as we think about how we're gonna move forward with funding.
Sure.
All of this work.
And that's actually a nice uh, segue for that discussion later, that the. Structure, the overview for um, the school community is, is simply a discussion item tonight. And then maybe we can utilize it to guide some work later on.
Yeah, no, I just, for the whole leadership team, we had a discussion prior to our school meeting about um. The transitions that we've made and the use of the Chromebook um, in the, in the classroom, when we went from remote to hybrid now to full in-person. I just have a concern that um, and I know our staff is doing all they can, but I just wanted to just throw it out there that. Um, to kind of put an emphasis on getting away from uh, remote teaching in person, I know that's simplification of the issue, but. Um, you know, anecdotally for my own students, I, you know, uh, my, my children. Uh, I just, I, I'd like us to get back to some normalcy, I know we're still in the midst of it. But just to kind of keep an eye on the overuse of screen time uh, within the classroom. Um, because we have the technology doesn't mean we always have to use it. I know the staff is doing a fabulous job, but I don't need to second guess that, but I just wanna kind of put that plug back out there. Um, because I think we've done a lot and come a long way with technology, but uh, you know, for me as an individual. Um, yeah, some of the personal touches of, of teaching, I don't want to lose that, so. I just wanted to put that out there for you all, I know everyone is working diligently hard at, at what they're doing and I don't need to take away from that. But I just wanted to put that uh, that thought out there again. Sure, thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I want to add is I think like, when we think about some of these benchmarks now. We might not be able to close the door on this year's goals until next academic year, so we might need to think about that when we're looking at the structure of our. Goals and even the superintendent's goals in terms of when these cycles get closed, because if we're gonna have aggregate growth data. Um, or, you know. Until probably mid-October, especially for release, in order to be able to talk about in the ways when it's not embargoed, then that's just gonna adjust our timelines as we think forward about.
Sure.
How we close this academic year's goals out.
And hopefully there's no more.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving over to Pam.
Uh, so the first item, five point two point one is the school EBT reimbursement grant. So basically, um, during the earlier stages of the pandemic, the state partnering with the federal government. We're trying to identify families that they need, that needed additional financial support. So Desi reached out to school districts across the state of Massachusetts to help get this information to families. Uh, we had no idea that there was gonna be any, you know, reimbursement kind of coming, but um, the, the state recently um, reached out and. Uh, said that uh, this grant is for reimbursement to school districts for the work they had to do to make this happen, we received three thousand seventy dollars. It was received on November ninth, um, these funds cannot go to uh. Uh, the food service revolving account because that is federally funded also, um. So the funds have to stay in the operational budget, so basically I'm going to do a journal entry to um, a clerical account. Because they're the ones who did the, the work partnering with um, with uh, the food service and then with the state and. And so luckily, you know, some of these funds, he said, just know, they call them PEBT funds, did go out to families, um, which, which is really great. Um, in fact, I think I even talked with um, Mrs. Brown to reach out to those IBL families to make sure that. You know, the languages were out there, so everybody was, was aware of it, so that's what this grant is, three thousand seventy dollars, so I just need the. School committee to officially accept those funds.
To accept the school EBT reimbursement grant of three thousand seventy dollars.
Motion made by Greg, second, second by Antonella, any further discussion? Thank you, Pam, all those in favor, please say aye. Oppose nay, and that motion carries by two zero three.
Thank you, the next item is five point two point two, and that's the S three grant. I gave you all um, a quick reference guide in the fact that I'm still a written kind of fool, but to give some highlights. Um, the American Rescue Plan, also known as ARC Act of two thousand twenty-one, was enacted on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. The ARC Act provides additional funding for school districts to respond to COVID nineteen pandemic. The education portion of ARC is known as the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds. S three is the shortened name, as you recall, in the past, we received S one. Uh, then we received S two last year, we're just finishing up those funds, I do anticipate. I do anticipate that those funds will be expended by year end, so I'm not exactly sure why we would need to draw down the S three. We have um, we have until September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four to expend these um, funds. Our allocation uh, for the district is two million two hundred thirty thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars. Um, similar to the earlier CARES and CRS Act, states receive S three funds based on their share of Title One funding. So I just wanted you to know how that kind of came about, um, then states allocate and distribute ninety percent of funds to districts based on each district's share of Title One and FY twenty-one. Districts should anticipate an award that is approximately two point two times larger than the S two grant was. Hence where we get the two million two three oh four four seven, again, I just want to remind folks that these um. These funds are until, you know, for us to use for the next two years, so we can really get some of these wonderful initiatives that we talked about. Um, going to sustain um, what, what we need to do for our students, um. I don't know if you have anything else to add, Mrs. Brown, since we kind of partnered on the application here and you submitted it.
But I assume we have some outline of a plan.
Exactly.
We have the almost three years, well, two and a half years, but, but we're not gonna need to start using it till after S or two.
Exactly, we only, exactly, and so again, it's that balancing act that Mr. Smith talked about earlier um, tonight. Is that this, this is a lot of money and we're not going to say it isn't, and we have a plan in place which may change. According to the, you know, the, the needs, like any grants, um, we do have thirty days, I believe this grant was actually officially approved. On November sixteen, and we have thirty days to put that plan out on our website, so we will be working this week to get that up on the website. So folks can see that, um, I do also want to remind folks that we did have a conversation, I think last month when, when I knew these funds were gonna be coming. Um, that uh, we have to do a survey with all stakeholders, um. And uh, Mrs. Brown uh, worked on that and got it out there, so we got the information, so we could get people's feedback and. On what they, what they thought the district needed, um, so we took all of that information, of course, with the leadership team, superintendent. Put a plan together and um, and that's where we're at right now, so again, I just need the, the school committee to um, officially accept.
Move to approve the S three grant in the amount of two three zero four four seven, I present the.
Motion made by Greg, seconded by Beth, any further discussion?
Just want to say this, this, these monies are to go, you know, with our regular budget above the, it helps us with social emotional. Fact that it costs us more to provide food for the students, they help us. Uh, make sure that our kids get those things to get them back where they belong and that just, that, that's what this is for.
And I think there's unforeseen costs in the next two years that we don't even. This isn't meant to supplement, uh, to take away from an operational plan, it's a plan, yeah.
Exactly.
For, for, to a great point, the unknown.
So just think of staffing.
Oh, yes.
Monitoring lunch.
Yeah.
Is, has been a staffing increase that we've never seen before.
Right.
Um, additional substitutes in each of our buildings, uh, moving to a permanent substitute. Um, actually, now buildings each have three, has been something that really has been a safeguard. Because we've had staff that have had to quarantine, we've had staff that have been out for other reasons, maybe they have a, a child in another town who's had to quarantine. Um, and so, you know, having those substitutes have been huge.
Are we relying on those substitutes for the common planning times now?
No, so the elementary common planning time, um, we have relied on the substitutes to do some of the live check-ins when people are quarantined. But um, the common planning time is predominantly scheduled around specials.
Okay.
So that's where um, Mrs. Lordy said the challenge can become um, somewhat monumental. When you're dealing with eight classrooms or nine classrooms, trying to figure out how you're gonna cover all nine, so they're not meaning as a full team. Or a regular group, they're meaning as half.
But each, each of those smaller groups has a facility, someone who's trained in RBT.
The attempt there was to try to give them a structure that makes sense, so that they're not. Sort of trying to figure out, okay, what do we want to do in the, you know, the thirty to forty minutes that they have, they have a structure. Um, they have someone who's somewhat of a trained facilitator that's been helpful.
I would just like to say that, you know, I have received so much positive feedback from the principals. At what a game changer this has been for them to get those to adjustment counselors, to not worry about any of the PPE coming from their budget. To not worry about those building subs, because we're, you know, we're lacking in other staff, um, the tents that we had out there. To just, they didn't have to worry about that because we had these funds and, and so we've been very, very appreciative of that, but I just want to remind everybody that it's a. It's a real balancing act, as we go through our next two budgeting years, that we get some of these things into our operational budget. Because otherwise they're just gonna be gone and that is not going to move the district forward, so we're gonna be working very diligently. You know, behind the scenes, getting all that together to bring forward to, to the school committee, to then go to the town council and, and work on, on, um. You know, showing them our, our picture and painting our pictures so they understand the importance of moving everything forward, so, thank you.
The challenges by no means are over.
No.
And everybody needs to realize.
Yeah, I mean, who knew a year ago that we'd still be here in mass?
Right.
We talked about the unforeseen, you know, future and um, we don't know what the.
And we can't make the assumption that because the funds need to be expended by twenty twenty-four. That the concerns associated with pandemic will be gone in twenty twenty-four.
That's right, yeah, this has definitely changed.
That's a huge, yeah.
I, I think it's safe, I think it's safe to assume, and I hate using that word, but. COVID or whatever it is, it's here to stay, it's not gonna go away, it's just like the, the flu every year, alright? So the adjustments and the things that we're doing now aren't gonna go away, they're here to stay and we just have to figure out. Getting it into the operational budget, educating people that this is the way it has to be, or this is the way it needs to be to move the district forward.
We had a motion made by Greg, seconded by Beth, that was our discussion, um, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, and that motion carries by zero, thank you, Pam.
Okay, and lastly for me is five point two point three, that's the FY twenty-two first quarter financial report. So in your package, um, I gave you the uh. Definitely twenty-two quarterly financial report as of September thirtieth, so just to remind you, it is as of September thirtieth, okay? Hopefully next month I'll have that second quarter for you, but um, and I will give you a little summary here when, when uh, kind of explaining what the different. Um, items are, so if you go right to page five, that's where I put the, the numbers in for you. And the salary, um, the counselor at the top section, and as you go down, you're going to, um, you know, we always have, if I just go from top down. Athletics, we always have money at the beginning of the year, so that's those not encumbered, um, encumbered funds and department heads. Um, and that's department heads, and I should actually add in advisors, so department heads are bi-weekly payroll, but. So department heads have bi-weekly payroll, but advisors are not, they're not paid until December and June, uh June. So you're going to see some, you know, uh funds remaining there. Nurses and medical staff, uh again, just like I said last year, there's been nothing normal. About this year, we've had um shortage of staff, we're covering with um contracted services, so we make that go up and this come down. But again, this is just in September, so just to remind folks of that. And as you go down, you know, we've got clerical and custodial. Their longevity is paid at the end of the year, so that those funds are not encumbered. I anticipate that that's what that is. You'll notice that under the, you know, paraprofessionals and teachers, those those are big items that, big balances that we don't typically have there. I was curious, um before tonight's meeting started, I pulled out last year's or actually. Two uh two years ago, the first quarter, because I was curious, what what did my first quarter look like then? And the teachers was significantly lower. I mean, was that like fifty two thousand dollars that that was remaining? And you'll see right now, it says teachers is five hundred seventy one thousand. So obviously, I'll be doing a lot of research, um you know, to to double check these. Budget lines. I anticipate that a lot of this is due to leave of absences, unemployment positions. Um it's just a myriad of things. But again, this was September thirtieth, so things could look very different on the second quarter. As we move our way down, um the administrative line, obviously, there was some unforeseen circumstances there. Yeah, and um so other uh salary lines that have available balances will end up covering that, so.
At the end of the year or?
Yeah, well, as as we move forward, if I identify something, yeah. Uh but I I have no doubt that's going to be covered.
Yep.
Um again, your substitutes, uh it's only the month of September and those aren't encumbered, so I anticipate that to be high. So um you know, I just want to remind folks that teachers are seventy one percent, that that budget line there for teachers. It's seventy one percent of our salary, you know, line, so which makes perfect sense, so. Um do we have any questions on the salaries at all? On the bottom section are your expense accounts. Um and again, you know, that nothing looks um out of the norm. A lot of the out-of-district tuitions um and contracted services just were not encumbered at this point in September, so. You know, there's really no other explanation except that. I think you're going to see a different picture. I know you're going to see a different picture on the second quarter. So again, I go down the bottom here and I was like to remind folks that our total budget is thirty two million, sixty six thousand, five thirty seven. We have expended on September thirtieth, four million, one, seven, one, three, four, six. We have encumbered twenty three million, seven, nine, three, four, one, three. And the remaining available balance is four million, one, zero, one, seven, eight, zero. Do you have any questions?
Paying the out-of-district tuition, um sixty percent encumbered and expended, is that typical?
No.
End of September?
No, I typically there's there's more encumbered, yes, yes. Now, we do have, as you'll see when we go to the next page, under our circuit breaker funds, there's also, sometimes it just takes. It just takes time to get the out-of-district tuitions um organized and and into the the purchase order process. That's really all it is, I anticipate. But I'll certainly be looking at that um over the next couple of few weeks here.
And then battle expenses, are we anticipating using all of it this year or are we doing what salaries here?
We don't know, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll see. There probably will be funds there.
Okay.
Um some of that is inter-district travel as as well, so, yeah.
Yep, different, okay.
Um okay, so the next page there, we always talk about um the grants and revolving accounts that we get. And I just would like to remind everyone, if we didn't get all of these funds, we would really be asking for a significant amount um more than than we do. For in the budget process. So the top of the page are your federal grants. If you recall, when I just gave you the uh final F Y twenty one. Um financial report, I had said there were some F Y twenty one balances that were rolled over, so I put those at the top there. And you'll see with that S R two that we talked about, at the end of September, there was two hundred and ninety thousand remaining there. Um so again, all all of these will be updated for the second quarter. Um F Y twenty two federal grants are then listed. You've got the typical, the Title One, Title Two A, Title Four. Um again, I believe you already approved all of those individual grants, so. Nothing is new there. Um some of this, like when you see the summer school expansion and engagement grant, that was for last summer. And those funds, I just, so that balance that's remaining there, I just need to sit with Mrs. Brown and the two of us just do some journal entries. To um to use up those funds for the summer school program, so that just hasn't happened yet, that's all.
Not for summer school this year for.
That's.
Pass.
Pass.
That's correct.
Because next year will be F Y twenty three, yes, just to be clear.
Yep.
We'll basically reimburse ourselves for the things we already spent.
Right, because that was a matching grant, wasn't it Heather? Yeah.
Okay.
So we were very lucky to get that. Um the next um section is the state grants, and again, it's the same ones, the Metco, the D P H grant. Everything looks in in line there. Um Kelly, of course, is using her D P H grant to help offset some of. The expenses for COVID-related things there as well. Um she also has that um. Anne Haskell actually is in as the, she's a caseworker, I don't know if that's the right title, is that the right title?
She's um our family um liaison.
Yeah, so that's that's been a win-win for for us with, yeah, knowing our families are ready and being able to. Come in and work part-time. It's just been a win-win. We're very, very lucky. Um. So then we've got the private grants, uh the Project Lead the Way, that one's been ongoing and you'll see that those funds are, you know, expended now and. The sustainability grant has just a small amount, which I think by now has already been expended as as well. You heard Heather talk about that um. Open S I A D grant. Um there's still money in there, but that was at the end of September, so I believe that. If the funds haven't been expended, we're working on expending them. So I always partner um with Heather and Gold Releas or Dr. Welch. On some of those grants, the special ed grants, of course, are are under Dr. Welch, so I always give them monthly reports and and um I do the monthly. Drawdown of the grants. Does anyone have any questions on the grant section? Okay, we'll go right into the revolving. Um so we have the athletic revolving account. Um again, uh so the first column is is what was carried over from last year, because as you know, revolving accounts just continual. You know, they're they're continual, it's not, you don't have to accept them each year. Um so. Uh I'm very pleased that we were able to carry forward forty two thousand dollars for athletics. Especially with transportation costs that they've had, too, they really needed that. Typically, they typically the minimum we we like to carry over is about thirty thousand. So that's a bit more, which is just a a good plug for them to be able to, you know, go into this year.
Is that expended and encumbered only the fall season?
Yes, so remember, this is as of September thirtieth, so that's the revenue. Most of the revenue comes in after that and um. It is not going to show in unus until it's been posted, because you know, behind the scenes, there's a process.
That's all sports fees?
Yes, well, sports fees and gate and gate receipts, yeah, both of those. Um the next one is the athletic stadium rental. And I just want to remind you um that we do have thirty four thousand in there now, twenty eight thousand you have allocated for resurfacing the track. To help partner with uh community preservation, so that just hasn't been, you know, that that portion hasn't been taken out of there yet.
Hopefully this June.
Say that again?
Hopefully this June.
Yes. Uh then we have the school rental and miscellaneous accounts, those are all just lumped together. All of the schools have um a a rental account. Um there's not a ton of revenue, as you can see, coming in there, so. Um student mobile technology insurance, um you know, as I said before, that's a little tough heavy because the people buy the insurance and they've got it for. One, two, and I think it goes to three years, so there's a, you know, different ones they can get. Um so we partner. Secretaries of the schools have been wonderful, um I T has been wonderful, partnering together because there has to be communication. Uh we need I T for all of the help with um, you know, fixing the machines and uh all the repairs that need to be done. But there's also the accounting side of it, which can be really time-consuming, so.
To that point, Pam, do you know how much we expended last year?
I don't, but I can find that out for you.
And then um. The balance, you just said it could be two or three years, so that that's not necessarily used in one year, that.
Exactly, yes.
Three or two-ish, yeah.
And I I already to us spoke to um Ryan Quimby to kind of tell him like. When we started this, which I think was three years ago, it's hard to remember the pandemic. I think it was three years ago.
Twenty nineteen.
Right, okay. Um so and and we have said that we would come back to the committee to kind of put in, you know, analyze what what's happened.
So what are we going to do that?
So.
Okay.
Okay, so. So the next one is the staff, uh teacher and paramountal technology repairs, so that account um. You know, it's it's the same as the as the um student, we only expended if there's repairs that need to be done and that's. That's worked out really really well.
I forget, Pam, do we fund that?
No, actually, we get that revenue from the E L.
Oh, we do?
We do, they gave us. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that goes in, but then we control it under our revolving account, so you guys have approved, you know, setting that account up.
So same thing, when we look at that, if we could look at that one too, last year, the expenditures.
Yep, just circles and don't forget.
Just in fairness, the.
Yeah, both of them. Um the school gift accounts, every school has a gift account. Again, these are, most of this is just revenue that's rolled over. And um the the principals use it for, you know, to benefit the schools, usually all all of the students. Um all of those gifts are always approved by the school committee. Uh tuition revolving accounts, um so we have a student from a. Another district that um attends a special ed program here in our district and pays a tuition. This is the last year of that. Um my plan is always to um offset the teacher expense with with the revenue if we have to. Does that make sense?
If we added added staff or no?
No, because you're not adding, but correct, but if um if they're paying us X amount of dollars for the student to come here. And I can put that revenue towards the teachers or parents.
Okay, great.
Okay. And the other one is the preschool tuitions, uh which again, you heard Dr. Well say that that's something they're looking into. I know currently, I believe our program is four days a week and it's eighteen hundred dollars a year with, if they pay upfront, a hundred dollar discount. But we try to break it out into ten equal monthly payments of a hundred and eighty dollars and um actually, the special ed student services department collects those. Revenues there, but the funds go into this account as well.
That's a great deal.
Right, and yeah.
Well, it's not, it's not self-funding. It's like a third or a quarter.
Right, but we did, um in all fairness, three years ago, I think it was three years ago, I keep saying that, we did um. Analyze and kind of do some research on on the on the surrounding districts um to find out, like, what was everybody charging? And some of them do, you know, more time and ours is a four-day, not a five-day, and it is like two and a half hours, it's not a full day. So there was a lot that was taken into consideration. I think it's great that um that they're looking at it at it again, because I I think we could. We'll make it longer and there's some other things. Um yeah, maybe maybe it could be five days. I mean, we'll see what they come up with, but it. I feel the same way Dr. Welch does, be very excited to hear what they have to say about that. Um and uh circuit breaker, so. We were able to roll over um the entire circuit breaker from last year, which is what we can legally do roll from one year to the other. On that amount, and then that amount needs to be expended in the following year. So uh this year, we're expecting. Um the last figure I had was nine hundred and sixty seven thousand, one forty four this year. They break into four quarterly payments. Which is um September, December, March, June. They tend to roll though, September comes in October and December comes in January, you know what I mean? Um but that's the revenue that, so what would be great is if we could. Try to do this each year to roll over as much as we can, so that we get that safety net to be able to. Maybe start some programs or be able to um not have to go to town council when we have an influx of special ed students that come in. Um so as the year goes on and as I analyze these expenses, um you know, for the out-of-district tuitions, et cetera. Um I'll be able to, you know, give you more information.
We will have to extend the whole carryover.
Yes, yes, we do.
Yeah, we will do it, yeah.
We will.
Okay, yep.
Okay, um transportation revolving, so the revenue that you see in there, you know, we are transporting on students this year. We did collect funds, um we did have to reimburse some folks that were charged uh that shouldn't have been charged, we're working on that now. Truly, you'll see that more in the second quarter, but um the revenue here was mostly collected. That that's why we had the seventy two thousand that rolled over. That was really funds that were collected before June thirtieth. For revenue for transportation for this current year, if that makes sense.
So not really rollover, just.
Exactly, yes, yes, because we we tried to collect it, um you know, before everybody goes off for the summer. And then we didn't have a transportation manager anymore and. Um school lunch account, um so that's looking better, it's, you know, it's better than it was last year. Want to remind folks, um.
So what are the receipts now?
Well, so the receipts are, it's the the money, we still get revenue from, it's free lunch, but it's. It's revenue from federal government.
Oh, and it goes into the revolving account?
Exactly.
Okay, yeah.
Which is why that P E B T federal, they told me to code it as a federal grant, couldn't go into here, even though Lori. Did a lot of that work, because it made sense, I wanted to give the money to her, but they they said, no, it cannot go because it's, yeah, exactly, federal to federal, so. Um so I just want to remind folks that, you know, Desi does um prefer. The best place to be is to have twelve weeks' worth of revenue, you know, or expenditures in there that that you could cover, which would be about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um which in normal years, we have that and um but now we're at a hundred and, oh, rounded, two hundred and fifty thousand. So we're getting much closer and I'm more confident um that she'll be, you know, we'll we'll be okay getting through this. The state and federal government certainly understands and recognizes that food service has had a lot of challenges. I mean, Lori came in not too long ago to explain the last minute changes in orders and she has shortage of staff and. There's just one thing after the other and I do want to mention her and her staff, that they've done a great job rolling with the punches here, some to speak.
Yeah, I'm sure most of them are same are similar.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I think we're very, very lucky to have Lori and her staff, they've done a great job. Um so, um last one, school choice. So I wrote down there, I believe in F Y twenty one, we had fifty. Oakland had approved fifteen slots and then F Y for last year, for this year, you uh had approved ten slots, did I get that right? And I went back to double check, that was one by memory, so um I carry forward eighty five thousand, uh so far we've received twenty one thousand. And um the balance is a hundred and six thousand there.
But that's not all encumbered from the sending districts at the beginning of the year, that'll continue to come in.
That's correct, so school choice, I believe, comes in with the monthly chapter seven, I'm thinking that's how it does. No, it comes directly, it goes to the town, it's a it's a direct.
I mean, does it come direct from the state or?
Yes, no, it comes from the state. It's all done on what they call the cherry sheet.
Okay, yep.
Back in the day, it was, the reason they called cherry sheet is back in the day, when the all this started, they did it on a pink piece of paper. So it became known as the cherry sheet, so all business managers always kind of referred, did you look at the cherry sheet? So um you know, it it's imperative to remember that the balances provided are a snapshot in time and are changing constantly. Um do you have any questions?
We still have twenty five school choice students and we.
That's correct, because once we've accepted.
We actually don't have twenty five.
We don't?
Choice, we did not fill all ten. We went through our entire waitlist.
Oh, really?
And we, I think we're down at least one, if not two students, in terms of the ten total.
Yep, wow.
We had a couple people commit, so we were five in five, five at the ninth grade level, five at the sixth grade level. And then we had people later in the summer drop out, decide to do other things, so then we went into our waitlist. Um solidified those and same pattern kept repeating itself, so.
And I'm sure it's wacky still, with COVID, I think COVID may even have an effect on that, yeah.
So we're either one, if not two, uh choice students down.
Okay. Great. Looks good, Pam.
Thank you, Pam.
Want to uh accept the F Y twenty two quarterly financial report as the.
Motion made by Greg.
Oh, sorry.
Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Thanks, Pam. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero. Okay, moving into new business.
Okay, um in your package, you have a letter dated um November the second. Is a letter from the rec department, uh department chair, Donna Prater. And um basically it's outlining um a request to host a wrestling tournament. Uh here at the high school, um but it would be on a Sunday and um it would start earlier than our normal. Um Sunday event policy. Uh this one, obviously being inside, does not have the same noise factor that outside events may have. I believe this is uh in honor of Bob Mazzarella.
Yeah, did say that. Probably the second year that this has happened, I don't think it happened last year.
Didn't happen last year, uh they had a, we did approve a wrestling tournament.
Yeah. Can we review, revisit the policy because I don't know why we have it?
Sure.
I'm I don't I don't say that, I say it sarcastically, but I mean, I don't know why we have it.
Well, maybe it 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 helps to.
Anybody wants it, ask for it, you get it, you get it. I don't think we've ever denied it. And it's fine, I I went to, like I said, the bubble, Sunday at seven o'clock, I mean, I can take my kids this morning, that's maybe that's the world we live in. Maybe it's overly euphoric. Maybe it's only euphoric to think that we're having Sunday mornings off, I don't know, I just think that it's, it's becoming. To the point that I keep saying, well, I, you know, we'll let it go this time, lose, but we just keep letting it go, so. Can we send it to the policy review committee, or, I don't know what you guys want to do, but.
Well, I mean, we can look at it.
It seems silly.
I mean, I think when we instituted it, was more timely than, than, and appropriate than it is now.
Why, though, what's, what's changed?
I think, just, I think everything is, the world has changed, everything has changed, I don't, I can't.
Yeah, no, but we can control it, though, we have.
Say in the world, we somehow, but we don't, like you said, every, everything that comes to us. We just go, well, let the church know and we, we approve it, so I don't know.
I do think it gives us a level of, you know, if we really felt like someone's going to come up with a big event, oh, we just say, no, sorry, this is more.
You're right, that's, that's.
Because most of the time when we approve these things, it's to benefit our students as well as, you know, like, like the lacrosse jamboree that they have. Our kids are involved in that, so I mean, I think that's why we, we just kind of like push it aside.
So I, I think your, your events, for the most part, at least as far as I can remember, you have uh, usually razor cold. Um, we've had the E-leaf runs.
Spartan sprint.
Spartan sprint, um, we've had this wrestling tournament and lacrosse, so four have been pretty consistent. Um, lacrosse did not happen, actually, we, we voted to allow it to happen, but they utilized um, all their fields in um, at Minichok.
Really?
Yeah.
I think, right, don't you guys always uh, also tell the people that are going to, like, like be mindful to not have, you know, loud music, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so that makes, yeah, triggers that, yeah, I guess, I mean, we, we, you know, we, we say all the right.
Yeah.
Okay, then I re, I retract my.
This one's inside anyway.
I know, but it's, uh, it's, the others, it's not, it's the noise, but it's also the family time, like Sunday morning, family time. Uh, you know, it's a half, and we, it's all like one o'clock, right, usually?
Yeah.
So it's only Sunday morning, it's not like Sunday all day, but.
In this case, your family time is happening before you.
This one. I know, no, I know, but our policy is one a or one b. Um, I move that we uh, approve the uh, request uh, for the wrestling tournament as presented.
Okay, motion made by Greg.
I'll sign it.
Second by Antonella, any further discussion? All those in favor, um, actually, and they will obviously be mindful of all COVID protocols, just let them say that, and we'll make sure that we communicate that.
Communicate that.
Um, all those in favor, please say aye, aye, oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero, have a great term.
Thank you. Letter number two, um, this is our high school robotics team. Uh, the letter actually, and I think I've included it behind the second letter, uh, originally came to us on the day of November fifteenth, um. School committee meeting, I did explain to uh, Mr. Van Buren that generally, when you're doing out of state trips, you should give the school committee thirty days in advance. He understood that it was not going to make the agenda, and so I appreciate that uh, understanding. Um, then he, within the next uh, two days, I was able to update, because he was. Not able, obviously, to go to the December fourth, the Kipsey tournament, um, and so he got us another letter on November eighteenth. Um, and he's got uh, some added tournaments that they can go to in December, which he picked up. So this outlines their tournaments for the year.
Will they go to all of these, or does he kind of pick and choose based on?
Uh, they do try to go to all of them, but um, I think in years past, as they got to, say, the February events, depending on where they were. Um, maybe they could, just as you're saying, decide, well, maybe we don't have to go to that one, because now, then they're uh, preparing. Hopefully, they have a couple teams that, you know, might go to the worlds, which they've done in the past, yeah.
And how, just, because I didn't see it, and forgive me if I miss it, um, how are they getting there?
So they uh, have parent volunteers to be driving, uh, that generally will take their own children, if uh, they're taking other children, then we have a permission slip to allow that to happen.
We just doing the one or both of them?
Oh, one.
Well, so the second letter dated November eighteenth is, is the updated, yeah.
So I need to accept the um, schedule of out of state. Uh, robotics uh, competitions as submitted by Mr. Van Buren.
Do you want to specify the date of the order?
Dated uh, November eighteenth, twenty twenty one.
Motion made by Beth.
Oh, second.
Second by Bill, and then I would just continue to impress upon, especially because these kids are traveling out of state, like, or even, we're within that thirty days now.
Right.
Um, because they leave, what, Tuesday the?
It's the sixth.
They leave Saturday.
They leave Saturday, so just making sure that we have that lead time to.
To review everything.
To review and approve, and make sure that kids aren't missing out on opportunities relative to this.
So some of them, they're on the weekend.
They're all on.
They're all on weekends.
Oh, but coming in the spring, you might have more if they make its own competition.
Yeah.
If they go, if they go to the worlds, I think that runs into school time.
Yeah, but then they're.
So it's usually one or two teams.
That's why I was.
Yeah, no, these are, these are all weekends.
Yeah.
Alright.
This is above and beyond.
Yeah.
So the motion was made by Beth, seconded by Bill, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye, aye, oppose nay, and that motion carries five to zero. Right, next is twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three's school year calendar, start, vacation, end dates.
So this is the um, the start of the calendar discussion, um, one of the new items this year. Is the fact that uh, year two of this three year contract, with year one issues, uh, we did negotiate in a, an added staff workday slash professional development. Uh, that was going to be next to the convocation day, um, so you see their convocation, twenty ninth of August, um, the thirtieth becomes our staff workday. Then uh, students start on the thirty first. With that said, we also agreed to reduce the amount of half days, so um, if, if tonight, we approved the start and end dates and vacation dates. This would go back to the collaborative committee and to the leadership team to make some recommendations as to where you would put, uh, really three items. Two half day PDs as uh, you know, we've done in the past, and we still have one full professional development day to put in this year. Uh, you heard uh, Ms. Brown talk about uh, January twenty sixth, so that's where that full professional development day is this year. But we also negotiated that that could float between January, February, and March, so we'll work with the. Collaborative committee to, and the um, leadership team to get some recommendations around those days and bring those back to you.
Kind of got a. Like, I used to be a fan of the Friday off, but with added holidays that have gotten added in, everything, I. I really feel like, can't that professional development day happen on the twenty sixth and orientation be the twenty fifth of, of August, because. You know, if there's snow days, if there's, I just think it, it just. Should be the professional development really shouldn't be kicking into what would be the start of the kids' school year, if you will, I guess, I.
I, I mean, could it, yes, uh, was that the discussion that we had in, in good faith with um, the ELA, no. So, so I think it would need to go back into discussion with the ELA before we just make a change.
We talked about.
Yeah.
Um, everything that we talked about when we negotiated that was having it after the convocation day. So I think we would need to, if we were to make that kind of change, I, I, I think we would be.
So the convocation day will have to be that Monday?
Uh, I think we just need to discuss that, yeah.
I, I, I guess I, I would like to see, because I feel like now, as we're moving out, even potentially getting rid, which I, I've never had a huge issue with the half days, but as we're. Getting away from the half days, we're adding more days into, I know we're not adding more than the hundred and eighty days, but more days that are breaking it up into a longer period. We're pushing into June more, and I don't know if you have it, but.
We're not that far off, I mean, June fourteen.
I know that, but I think that there should be maybe a, a little buffer toward the end there more than we've had in the past, I don't, I'm just.
And I just even think from the educator experience, you're going back to back days of professional development, and then you're launching with kids.
I'd like it.
I'd want my weekend.
I'd want the weekend to.
I'd want to be able to kind of get myself organized, get my classroom situated, utilize that professional development, be fully immersed in growing myself. As a practitioner, have my weekend, and then come back and, and be ready to go and welcome kids.
Yes and no, though, I think, and I don't pretend to speak for the educators and the staff, but. I don't think they want to necessarily come back earlier for that.
I mean.
And I, well, I know they, they gotta come back at some point.
I mean, that, that's where I think, if you, if you're being in this, that's the reality, I, I don't think that they're thinking that's.
But that's going to move that last day up to the thirteenth, and then they get out the backend.
Yeah.
Because I know, I, I just sit there, I'm thinking the day before school starts, I'm like, I don't care what you have to say. There's nothing you're teaching me here I know about, I have a bulletin board I have to put up, I've got these kids' name tags I have to, how am I going to get the name tag to stick on the table?
Well, we, Beth, we.
You know what I'm saying, but I, in terms of.
Yeah, I know, but we structured it.
Yeah, we, we really prescribed it so they have, they have the time. I think they really want that, um, the, the negotiations was really around, what does that date look like, and how much time do they have? In building-based um, meetings, as, and also classroom time and grade level or department-based uh, work, and so. The tape that I got from those discussions is that, that's what they're using, you know, that's how they're focusing themselves to be ready for the next day.
There is time for that.
So what do they have to learn on that, I guess I just feel like that's, that's a prep day, it's not, it's not a professional.
No, it is professional development day, because, because that's what we negotiated in the contract, it's the additional PD day, but there's also classroom time or individual time.
It's a combination.
Not the whole day, because we don't want to just make it a paid.
It's like half, it's half day.
Yeah, we don't want to make a paid, uh, you know, get ready day, but it's like a half.
It's like a half day of PD.
Yeah.
A half day.
And a half day that's protected.
The other half of the day, they kind of do what they need to do.
I don't know, I mean, right now, I, I, I think we're back to a calendar that's more reminiscent of what it was.
Well, what if we started on the thirty first, and that's the um, the new staff orientation day?
Thirty first?
Yep.
Push it.
I was, yeah, well, back the week.
You're bumping the other side, you're bumping the other end.
So the kids don't start to after Labor Day?
No, we can't.
And why could you do that, I'm trying to get them out earlier, not later, like, because.
Right, but you, you guys are saying you don't, the teachers don't want to come back earlier.
Yeah, right, I would see this.
I think we have to have the discussion, that's all I'm saying, if you, if you were going to make that change, because that was not the discussion we had when we negotiated.
Yeah, and, and I know that, I, you know, I guess we didn't think of the ramifications of the first and second day only leads to a three day school, school week. The Friday is now a school day, though, which is not the long weekend that we had originally had.
Well, no, when we first started it, it was Monday, and then the kids are here Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and you get the long weekend, we moved away from that.
Right.
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 But now we've negotiated a professional development day, which presents the same scenario.
Which we wanted in the, at the, at the beginning of the year, that's right, so it's got to go there somewhere.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. It has to go somewhere.
I think this is really the only option we have.
Alright, I don't know if it really is.
Because.
I don't think so.
No, because I think that, we got a whole week before, I know. Other districts did it on Thursday, and then they actually had their convocation on Friday, and I think they started on Monday, which I'm not necessarily proposing that, because.
Yeah, but I. Or, but they're a week later, or you're saying they would have started in the, in the mid twenties?
No, they not worked on it Thursday, Friday, yeah.
Yeah, there, that week.
The mid twenties?
The convocation was on a Friday.
Well, I mean, I think if we're going that route, then we, then we should.
That's, 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 I understand that's not us, but.
It's not like we need to impact bargain, but I think it, it's worthy of a discussion before we solidify it.
It's worth a discussion.
I'm fine with having a discussion about it.
Alright.
Then, then we probably just table this and, until they, should we get that group together more, or how, how would you prefer we do that?
Um, I'll talk to um, the ELA and see how big a group they want to put together, and then um. Uh, you and Antonella were our reps for negotiations, so, you know, we can sit back down.
And maybe they're up for it, maybe they're, maybe, I mean, it's worth asking, I suppose.
My hope is to be able to get the kids out that week of the thirteenth.
Well, the other issue is Juneteenth, that bumps us.
Well, that's, and that, that adds a day.
They run it every year.
Right, so you can't, if you start after Labor Day, now that you've got Juneteenth, you're bumping up against the last week of June, and that, I mean, that's risky. So. If I'm hearing this right, when the discussion took place, and I'm not criticizing anybody, it wasn't a real, it wasn't realized that this would have, would result in a three day week?
It was more about getting that second professional development day.
But with no consideration on the other side.
We didn't really just talk about the start day, okay, we just talked about.
There were no dates, right?
Professional development, right?
The convocation and then, then a professional development day, and then the students come back.
Okay.
Right.
Whether or not we slide that into Friday, I, it's worth a discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't specify that, I should say.
Okay, no, 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 that, that's, I just want to clear up.
And I respect them not wanting us of that last full day, of that last full week of August, but theoretically, they're working already.
Right.
You know what I'm saying, they're, they're already, I know they're working already.
Right, but historically, they're not used to convocation on that Friday, they're used to it on Monday, yeah, so I think we get the group together, and we'll just see.
Right, they're, it's Monday, yeah.
But, we change things all day.
And we'll just see, and, and I think we can be reasonable, if, if it's not something we can do right away, then we can have further discussions on it and maybe stick with this as outlined. If it's a big deal.
Well, I think at this point.
But, but if it's also not written anywhere.
You're right.
I know.
Then I think we have to have a discussion.
We'll have a discussion, that's fair, okay.
So, at this point, let me just table, table that.
Table this.
Yeah, what about uh?
Graduation would still be the second or the third, right?
Well, that's all, that, yeah, that's on the first weekend.
Uh, graduation is most likely to be, yeah, graduation would be probably the second.
I'm just making sure, because that's a big one for me.
What about uh, the second week in November, we have two days off, is that, do we typically do it that way with Veterans Day?
Where we uh.
November eighth and the eleventh?
Well, we've always done our, our first professional development day on election day.
Oh, it's election day, okay.
Yeah, and so, yeah, it's, it's tough when it falls in the same week like that.
I know, it's in the same week as.
Because.
No, we should, we should do that, I didn't realize election day, yeah.
Um, you know, and that was something that we agreed on early on in my tenure, and it's just the way, you know that you have so many people in your school.
Yeah, no, no.
Yeah, once, once nine eleven happened, we, we.
No, it's good, I'm not, I didn't realize it was, it was election day.
It normally does not fall in the same.
Same week.
No, it doesn't, it's just, every seven years, it's going to fall in the same week, it's just, I don't think there's any way around that one.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Because um, Veterans Day is one of those holidays you celebrate on the day and not on the Monday.
On the eleventh, yeah.
Yes.
Because the other difference is, a lot of the other holidays are celebrated on Mondays, and you can maneuver around that.
Right.
Alright, so you will, we'll table this for now, you'll bring it back to that working group alongside of Antonella and Greg, and we'll get some further input, so we can. Hopefully move forward with the first part of the calendar.
And then, the observation of New Year's Day, we have to do that contractually, or state, is that a state holiday?
That's a state thing, yeah.
The second, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Because it falls on that Sunday.
Yeah.
And it also.
It's not New Year's Day, it's the second.
It would be in, it's in some of our contracts as well.
Okay, fair enough, yep, yep.
They need that day.
I'm trying to get them out, I'm trying to get them out.
That's the day to take down Christmas trees.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Because otherwise, it's not until February, right?
That's the challenge.
Alright, so the next piece we have is superintendent's educator plan.
So, um, I won't obviously read through the entire plan with you unless you'd like me to.
I, I would like it to.
Alright, you always.
We have a gun here for three and a half hours, yeah.
Um, but I'm, I'm in the unique position that, um, where, obviously, I want to incorporate our district SMART goals. Uh, as well as any goals that you may have as we work together, say, in the next meeting, um, and that's the next agenda item in terms of just a draft structure for that. So, with the district SMART goals, um, I've also added some individual, the district SMART goals become the team goals, and I've added some individual um. Practice goals, professional practice goals, and um, I would incorporate, obviously, the benchmarks we talked about, as well as um. Work with all of you to do some of the things that we may have to do around um, budget and um. Relationships in terms of changing personnel on the county side.
How's that going?
Uh, so far, so good.
Okay. When.
Tammy Spencer tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
When, uh, when, when are you thinking on some sort of recommendation for the preschool, any changes for that?
So, if we can stay on track, we're hoping to have a report or at least maybe uh, recommendations, I mean, not the full draft of the report, in January.
Okay.
And um, you know, then we'll look at that, a lot of that is looking at, I mean, you know, do we have enough? To possibly add another section, so you, you may be looking at another teacher, but do we also change the model drastically and go five days? As well as other very um, specific elements is, you know, how is our process uh, working? How effective is it as we go from the early childhood transition, child turns three and comes in, right, you know, to our preschool? Other things we could do there, so we're really looking at it all the way through, um, to see what we can do to improve. Because I know we're going to have, well, obviously, Dr. Wells is retiring, and we may get some retirement at Meadowbrook. And so we're going to have changing personnel. And so if we can get some concrete recommendations and a plan in place, I think that's going to be helpful to anybody coming on board.
Is there, is there typically a waiting list for preschool?
We do a waiting list for the peer role models. Yeah.
Now, they do morning and afternoon, or they just do them?
Not do morning.
Some of the kids that are, I know the peer models do, but some of the other students, are they full day? So do they end up experiencing circle time twice in the, you know, or?
So knowing it's full day, you may have some people that have an extension to their day.
Okay.
But they're, they're, then they'd be, they might be receiving services and so forth for that extended time. So they wouldn't be going through the exact same routine and say, you know, if they have added time past the morning.
Okay. Because that makes it, I know sometimes it does make it difficult when you, you got the same students or.
Right.
Can we have the space for another room?
That's a great question.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. We should have put on another room.
We, yeah.
There we go.
Should have cut up.
We, we would be probably reconfiguring again in terms of how we utilize rooms. But that's the fun bit, I think.
Well, I mean, it's a challenge, and let's read it. I mean, depending on what the recommendations are moving forward for preschool.
That's another thing, too. You wonder what the federal government's going to hit us up with preschool at some point, too, because I think they really just want to make it our job, right? Like, let's just get the kids from birth to twelve, uh, fall training. And, you know, I know, but I feel that way sometimes. They just, they like, you can't parent, we want to get those kids out. We're going to teach them how to do everything. And so I do see there's something in the works at the, and not the federal level, at the state level of, of making it almost mandatory that they're operating.
Well.
But as the uniformality is doing.
Look at how, look at how long it took, I guess, universal kindergarten.
Yeah.
It took, it took, and the pandemic, the real.
We still have, have to get kindergarten.
Right, and kindergarten isn't mandatory, so.
Yeah.
Right. No, I didn't say mandatory. It's universal. There's a difference.
Yeah, I think there'll be.
Yeah.
So Gordon, you, these changes to the district SMART goals will be reflected in your educator.
So that'll come back.
Plan. So this will come back?
Okay.
Yep.
The only other thing that I think, me, I think I would like to see entertained in there is for Gordon, the superintendent's plan to capture some of those learning blocks. So if you're doing them already, I think your educator plan is the logical place to capture those, because then that's something that's evidence-based, that we're able to reflect on and look at the results. That opens it up for us as well, to look at that as evidence, not only relative to the district goals, but relative to Gordon's role in supervising the administrators around the building-based goals. So it helps us to kind of have that, that follow-through in a slightly, from a slightly different angle.
Sure, I can handle this.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So that will come back for approval. And then school committee.
We did get two of these, I apologize.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted you to make sure you had enough.
Make sure we had extra copies.
Just want to pack it anyway.
Just go read and reread.
See everything else.
Yep. So this, again, will be more for information tonight. I think the things that we've talked about might also include us looking and taking into consideration, if we want to capture, to Greg's point, some of those educator voices, and we think about the action step relative to, or the goal relative to building and maintaining community relationships and extracting that beyond.
So this is basically just a draft.
Yep.
It's just a way to get you thinking about the different areas, not only that you have oversight, but how does that then translate into some action steps? And so it can be revised in any which way you want to revise it. The thought process was that maybe we take an hour before the next meeting, whether that's directly before the six o'clock meeting or at another time, that's obviously up to your choosing, just to have some professional development and some discussion around this that sets sort of an action plan and some goals that connect back to the SMART goals.
So to that point, with the changes that we suggested tonight, we'll wait on this as well.
Well, this, we're always going to wait on.
Right. But this, even, I think even before we have a discussion, we need to see what the other documents look like.
Right. I mean, I think you, we can all still incorporate it and still do, if you wanted to do it, you could do some professional development before the meeting on the twentieth. If you want to table it to a January meeting, it's up to you. I think we're going to get into budget discussions, though, before January. So it might be wise to do, at least have some discussion around these goals on the twentieth.
That's fine.
You have something else I'd like to bring back, if we could, and it doesn't have to be on this tape, but back in the day, when things were kind of changing over, the, the school committee, we had the MSC in, and we created norms and, norms and rules.
It was professional development, yeah.
It was, but we actually created a document for us.
Yeah, we did.
And I don't know, I don't think it's a bad idea to relook at that, because we function now, but it was done in case we weren't.
There was a reason that it was done back then.
There was a reason, and I think it should be something that should be brought back to us at some point, just to look at, to know what exists.
Sure.
See if there's something we want to change based on, because I couldn't even tell you what it's in right now. But I think it's not a bad idea, because at some point, maybe the group won't function as well. And we will need to come back together, and I think it's important to have that document in place.
Sure.
Well, I, I mean, I can reach out if.
I think she's looking just for the document.
Just for the document, right? Yes.
Do we still have the document?
It's been ten years since I've seen it.
Yeah, it was twenty ten.
Was it really?
Yeah.
It was one of the first things I did as superintendent. I called Scott Krieger and Tom Scott.
No, it was the reason we ended up.
We set professional development where both associations came and, and did some professional development for us. And then we created that norms document and roles and responsibilities.
Because I don't even know if like, there are any, that's a, that's a thing. And it's not that big a deal, but it would be if things weren't working.
See, there also is, and I've, I've seen copies of it, it's almost like, it's not a code of conduct, but it's a handbook of school committee rules and responsibilities. That, again, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. Might need something like that. You know, I don't know, because it, it's, these are, it's a working document. It's a living document.
Sure.
But, you know, it's something that, you know, I think the warrants of further discussion.
Sure. Can we put that up there?
I will search back through our files and see what I can find. There might be a paper if you thought.
Blow off the dust, yeah, right?
We didn't have a shared folder at that time.
Oh, we didn't have, we didn't have Chromebooks either.
We didn't have Chromebook. That was before the iPad.
That was definitely.
It was before the iPad.
Oh, my gosh.
Ten years ago.
I didn't have these gray hairs.
All right. So thank Mr. Mackey for sticking with us for quite some time today.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey.
Nicholas picked a good meeting to have to study. Kathy's been with us this whole time recording, so thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy.
And then with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Bill, seconded by Beth. Any further discussion? Thank you to all of our panelists tonight. And all those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye, oppose nay. And that motion carries five to zero. Thank you, everybody.